I will call this meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, roll call vote please.
It's the roll call vote for the April 11th work session of the City of South Fulton City Council. The Honorable Catherine Nefroyal, District One.
Present.
The Honorable Carmelita Gums, District Two.
Present.
The Honorable Helen Zee Willis, District Three.
Here.
The Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District Four.
Present.
The Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five. The Honorable Natasha Williams Brown, District Six. And the Honorable Linda B. Pritchett, District Seven.
Here.
And lastly, the Honorable Mayor Khalid.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
All right, would you sign the next item?
The next item on the agenda is City Manager Item, Staff Reports. First report will be the Finance Monthly Report presented by Karen Slaton Dixon, Finance Director.
Start with slide two here, that's where I like several of the key revenue items. Show there we've actually budgeted 90% of our basic property tax. We also budgeted 124% of other taxes and 140% of present of our useful service. And overall, we budgeted 79% of the projected revenue. On slide three, this is a summary of our expenses to general funds. We have February 28, which is 4% overall of the expenditure spent on general fund. On slide four, we have the general fund year-to-date revenues. We received 27.43% in 20 million in taxes. So that's 101% overall of what was actually billed out. And we received 111,843 from taxes from the West Side TAN and 38,36 from the East Side TAN. On slide five, we have our general fund year-to-date go-bought and sales tax loss. We're showing a collection of 2.6 million, which is 21.1% overall that was received in February of 2022. On slide six, this is our general fund year-to-date loss. And here we're showing a collection of 1.5 million, which is 11.81% over this time in FY '22. And on slide seven, this is, once again, this is a summary of our expenditures based on slide three. And slide eight, this is a summary of revenues and expenditures for all funds as of February 2023. So this shows the revenues and expenditures side by side. And on slide nine, we have our confiscated assets. And we have a bank balance of 503,315.97 with, as of February, 201,693 coming from cash collected confiscated. And the expenditures from training shows $3,400 spent year-to-date. And on our next page here, which is accounts and supplemental information, we have no changes from January in our ERP funds. And of course, the RFP was awarded to the Anser Advisory LLC. And then on our contracts, 25,000 or more, I'll update that on our March 2023 report because, just because of some staff changes, we need to get that information updated. And I do have the January monthly report available, and I will send that out just for your records. And at this time, I'll take any questions.
All right, seeing no one in the queue, could you go back to the slide with the tads? I know you guys are working on that in the back. Thank you.
Which slide was that?
With the, uh, the east side and the west side tad.
So you want to mean to go over the 111,843 that was collected versus the 38,36?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So if you'll take a look at the, the top box, the county actually billed out 210,733 for the West Side TAN. And according to February, they said that they had actually collected 111,843 of that 210,000 that was billed out by the county. And the same thing with the east side, they billed out 240,573. And they're showing that they've collected for the city 38,36. And so they send that information to us each month.
They're, they're on a, um, July 1 fiscal year?
That I'm not sure, because we just received the March numbers today. So they normally send us out an email, because you will notice that even what they actually billed out each month for property tax, it changes from month to month, because in the top box, it says 46,806,385. Based on their adjustments and assessments that are done, appeals, that number can change. So we wait till we get that information from the county.
Okay, Dr. L.
Yes, I noticed under the ARPA spending, we have a number of expenditures. Have we reported that out so we can make sure that we don't have money sitting out there accounted for or in the process of doing that?
You mean reported out on the required reports for the ERP?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, yes. Our, our grant manager does that. And we actually received an email that that's due, if I make no mistake, by the end of this month, April.
But it's already been done, thank you.
Uh, Councilman Willis?
T-SPLAS funding, are you, who's accounting for that?
We actually received that information as well from when the bank, when it actually hit, hit our account through ACH. So it actually posts, and so we get an email based on that collection as well.
So is, is, did I miss it? Is it a report for T-SPLAS?
Yeah.
Yes, it is on. You mean on the slide that says for month ending February, year-to-date T-SPLAS revenue?
What slide, what slide is that?
Eight.
Okay, so I'm on slide eight. And, okay, T-SPLAS, so that is how much we have collected fiscal year 2023 total T-SPLAS, and that's the new T-SPLAS. T-SPLAS two, correct? Seventeen thousand, five hundred.
That's correct.
Okay. And not.
You said seventeen, so you mean seven million.
I meant seventeen million, five hundred. And only of that, uh, 531,000 has been expended? Year-to-date?
For, for February.
No, you.
No, that's year-to-date.
I think you're looking at confiscated assets, is that what you're looking at?
Okay, hold on, hold on a second. Okay, so we haven't expended any T-SPLAS yet.
Well, on my report, I always show our revenues. Wait, let me, let me make sure you know what I'm saying.
Okay, so I'm looking at slide eight. And under, it says revenue year-to-date, it has budgeted 17,500,000. And then when I go over to the expenditures, it says 17,500,000. And then year-to-date, it has 531,000.
Okay. All right, and so, yes, now we have expended some funds from there. I will update that.
So year to.
Information for you.
So year-to-date is 531,000?
Let me, let me get on the slide, um, right.
It's Slaton Dixon, is that one of the slides you changed?
No, it's not.
It shouldn't?
It's on, I'm on slide eight.
Right, and so, yes, okay, I see where you are now. So we've expended, yes, 531,387. But the budget was 17,500,000, correct?
Okay, so.
And this is as of February. This is not the overall life of the, the second T-SPLAS.
Right, so this is the budget, that what we budgeted, do we have actual that we have collected?
I'll get that in, because I noticed it's not on here. I see what you're asking.
Okay, so can I make a suggestion?
If you look, yes, it is, let me make sure. If you will go to my slide number, where, six, where I talk about general fund year-to-date. Year-to-date T-SPLAS revenues. Six.
Okay.
We got seven million.
So you see seven million, 113,643.
Okay, I'm on, you said slide six?
Yes, that's correct. It'll say general fund year-to-date T-SPLAS revenues for the month ending February 20.
Okay, so, okay, let's see, seven million, one million. Okay, so is there any way that we can, is there any way that we can have a more comprehensive T-SPLAS slide? I mean, um, one with collections, one with the budget, actual collections and actual expenditures?
Yes, I can do that. I can add that slide.
Because it was kind of confusing, because you got one on one slide and.
Okay, all right. I'm making that note. I'll make that change for you.
Okay, and then one more question. The tads, so is this only for collected based off of the municipal, I mean, our municipal taxes? We're not, because we haven't gone into an agreement with the school or county yet. So is this just based off of municipal taxes?
And when they send that information to us, they don't have it broken down based on that information. They just tell us West Side and East Side tad. So I will have to see if they can send that information to us.
Yeah, if you could ask for them to break down how much of it is, if it's all municipal. Which is county and which is school? I'm not aware of them getting into any agreement yet, so. But if you could just let us know what that is encompassed of.
Okay, all right. I'll get that email sent out.
Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no further questions, Mr. Clerk, please call the next item.
Next item is item number two under Roman numeral three, City Manager Monthly Report presented by Don Tomes, Acting City Manager.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and Council. You should have the total City Manager Report. I'm just going to hit a few of the highlights, starting with solid waste. Currently during the month, the city staff worked on the routes for collection and should have sent to each council member the address listing. That way you can see the, the routes. The final version should be available during the month of April, which will have the maps. Our solid waste, Mr. Gordon Burkett, he's currently working on an interactive map so that residents can type in their address and their information will actually pull up. So he's, he's finalizing that information along with the maps for the, for the council. The solid waste carts, all the design work has been sent to the producer and is in the final state of production. We are undergoing the, the final review of the, for the second reading of the solid waste ordinance. That will be loaded into the legislative portal by April 14th for council review. Our education materials, we are working, working on that information. That way we can provide the council with draft. That way we can have a chance together to review the information. And then the plans are to mail those documents to our residents, put it up on social media, the website, and also assist the council members with adding the information to your newsletter. We also have additional components for live meetings that we will work with the council members to see where we need to be during the month of, of, month of May. And then we are still on schedule for a June 1st rollout. The city has been revamping the city website. You'll see this in several pages to include the city council members' pages. The department reports, as noted at our last work session, we have updated through February 23rd on the website. The council should have received those total department packages. And the March package should be available by the end of this week. As we continue to transition to live meetings, currently the, the two spaces that we have available for board meetings and staff meetings is right here at the Welcome All Multipurpose Room and also at City Hall in the, in the Backbreak Room. We're still trying to identify if space is available at the Southwest Art Center, but they, they keep a, a fairly busy schedule. So we certainly don't want to interfere as we approach summer. Both our Parks and Rec and cultural affairs gets a little bit more busy. One thing that we're working on currently and will be a, a multi-month task is identifying succession plans. We are beginning working with various departments on cross-training. And we want to be able to present that and include that in the upcoming fiscal year 24 budget. That way we can see the positions, have them color-coded so you see who's been cross-trained and also do a thorough review of job descriptions to make sure that there is ample cross-training and knowing, you know, where the overlap is. In addition to looking at the policies and procedures and internal documents to make sure that if staff members leave, that the, there's ample notes and information there to move forward and that someone above or below that position's also been cross-trained. In addition to that, coming up on the April 25th council agenda, they have received and reviewed the RFP for the, the city's class and comp study. So that will be presented for approval at the April 25th, 25th council agenda meeting. The strategies that have been identified in the reports hit the goal, goal one, invest in development, strong teams, and also for focus on economic development. And I believe there was a question about the Wolf Creek. That is under final review with the city attorney's office. And the contract should be available for signature by week's end. And I'll make sure that we send out a copy to everyone prior to the signature.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Willis?
Thank you for your report. Are you saying for the month of April, we only have available meeting spaces Welcome All Park and City Hall?
These are meetings not including for the city council. Your meetings will still be at Southwest Art Center and here.
Oh, okay.
These are for the other board meetings and those type of meetings that are utilized by staff.
Okay. I just wanted to bring attention to you that I'm still getting a lot of complaints from residents that they're not able to get through City Hall to specific departments for various reasons. I can't pin it on one department. But I'm still getting a lot of complaints from residents that they're not, they're, they can't get through to anybody at City Hall.
Okay, we, I believe we have a presentation coming up that will address some of that.
Okay, and then the pay and class study, is there any way that, are, are they going to present? Because the last time we had a pay and class, uh, pay and comp study, what happened was the person who did the study came and presented before council and before approval. So it's almost like we just.
No, this is, this, the RFP came in, this is to get approval to go with that vendor.
Oh, okay, so this is not the actual.
This is not the actual presentation.
Okay. And then the T-SPLAS projects, can we get, I know I just asked for a full accounting of it, but we also need the projects that are going to be, we need an itemized list of what the projects are going to be for T-SPLAS two. Like road pavements?
And, and I'll also include a map. That way you can see the maps by districts.
Okay, and then the, um, street signs, you sent a report of how many street signs was, but it wasn't any detail on what streets there were. And it's my understanding Champion Park street sign that still hasn't been replaced. And I need a timing on when that's going to be done, because they've been waiting two years for it.
Okay, I'll, I'll shoot out an email this weekend and update the Champion Park and also the schedule.
Yeah, that's, what we got was, what was done, I mean, it was like very numerical, but it was no details about where those signs went or anything.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Dr. L.
Yes, I had a question. Specifically, you in your report talk about union contract negotiations beginning at earlier part of this month. How long do you anticipate that that process will be this year?
I, I believe there are four meetings scheduled for the month of April, and a report should be presented to the council in May.
Okay, so good, that's considerably less time than we've had in the past, so that's good. And then there was one other question I had relative to the, well, you had the goals outlined under the strategic plan. But there's, in the future, can you provide more details under those bullets? That's what I ask. In fact, some of these things that you have bulleted probably can be under those categories. The way you have it structured, just as observation.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Councilman Willis, you're back in the queue? Okay. So a, a couple of questions. We, I asked for you to present this report because it is possible that we will end our emergency ordinance. If not, next month at some point, we would, we would have to end that. This question, I guess, is for Attorney McLendon. The boards and commissions, do they have to meet in city spaces? Can they meet in a library or a Masonic Lodge or some other public space?
Thank you for that. They do not have to meet in city buildings. They only have to meet in spaces that are accessible to the public.
All right, so that, that's good. That gives us a little more, uh, a little more opportunity. I want to follow up with you, Mr. Tomes, about the sanitation. What day will the mailer go out to the city? Maybe not like the specific day, but like where, where are we in that process? Because we're, we're coming up on the, the first.
Yes, we're hoping this month we'll have the information for Mayor and Council to review, gather your input for any, any changes that you think is pertinent to the residents, and then get that, get that out. I would think we should be able to get that out this month. That way they have plenty of time.
And then what day will the call center go live?
That I have to get back to you. Usually the call center will go live the week of actual operations.
I'm going to strongly suggest that the call center go live the day we send the items out in the mail. We already are a little overwhelmed with phone calls at City Hall. So when people get that mailer, if they have follow-up questions, it'd be nice to have some additional staff. And then lastly, Mr. Valenzuela, you sent out a, uh, if, if you don't mind, could we bring Mr. Valenzuela up? You sent out a T-SPLAS project list for 2022 through 2027, July of last year. Has it changed from that final list that you sent out then?
No, sorry, it should have changed. That was, uh, the project list, I want to prove, uh, it's still at South Fulton. And then approved by Fulton County.
All right, and.
But that was for T-SPLAS two.
Okay, so that's the, the second five, this next five years of T-SPLAS.
That's correct, yes.
All right. The, the follow-up question, because we had some concerned citizens, Councilman Sebastian shared some citizens in District Four that had issues about gravel roads. Those are not covered in T-SPLAS. But if we need to fix potholes, where do you get that money from?
That will come out of the maintenance funds for construction and operations. And we're currently working on a cycle to maintain all the gravel roads that we have throughout the city. We have about 27-plus miles of gravel roads.
All right, and you probably can stay up here. Those are all my questions. We're segueing right into your, your presentation now. Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a City Manager, I do have a couple of follow-up questions for you. One with regards to the mailer. We are not going to have to wait until the next city council meeting to take action on that mailer, right? You guys, it's just an administrative task.
It is administrative task, all, but I am going to send it out to the council members to review before we mail it out.
Okay, and, and the reason why I am really with the mayor with this and pushing this because the calls and the texts and the emails are increasing because we're getting closer to the date. And so as much as we have talked about this, having these different meetings and publish things in my newsletter, there's a section on sanitation that is in my newsletter, and it remains there. We're still getting the calls and all that sort of stuff increasing. So the sooner we can get that out to the public, I believe it's, it's. So the sooner we can get that out to the public, I believe is, is the better. Because calls are now coming in especially around, I got a bill from my carrier for three months and you guys start in June. What do I do? Yeah, I've had those questions. And I've faced that myself in which I went into the vendor's portal and just found the bill and changed the period and I say, I owe you for one month because I'm out June first, and I paid that fee rather than the entire bill. But people have these kind of questions that they're asking more and more now. So the sooner we can get something in every hands of our citizens, it's going to be the better. Okay? The next thing is about CDRA, because I know I think I sort of addressed this with you as well. Generally, I think CDRA is going well, but we're still having the issues around backup fees like people, right? And it's nobody's fault. You know, I tell people, we have a lot of projects going on in this city. But are we, are we there in terms of recruiting staff or hiring contractors where we feel like, you know, we'll be okay for the next three to six months?
Yes, and it's my understanding that some job offers have gone out this week to fill some of the vacancies.
Okay. So no outside use of contractors to take us over there? We're still just hiring? Okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Willis?
Around CDRA, CDRA, I really need, I'm going to need a lot of support around community outreach. I have approximately six different developers that are in District Three. And residents need to understand zoning and future land use. And then particularly, I would like to have staff when I go out to talk with residents, at least a staff person there, to hear the concerns and address residents when it comes to zoning questions. And I don't know if anybody else has experienced that, but it has definitely picked up in District Three. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other comments or questions, Mr. Clerk, you can sound the next item.
That brings us to item number three of Public Works' monthly report presented by Antonio Valenzuela, Director of Public Works.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council, and residents of CSF Fulton, acting city manager. I'm going to try to be very brief with the transportation staff's report because we have a great presentation on paving management coming up, and I would like you to fully devote your attention so that way you will understand what we've done for all the roads that we have within the CSF Fulton since we have finalized the assessment of about 615 center miles for the city. But the report that you have in front of you now, it's an updated report throughout the month of March. We've done a few changes since the last month that we discussed with you. We have six sections on the report. It goes from one to six. We also added more specifics for your district so that way when you need something, you can just pull it or print it out, adjust your specific district, and you'll have the information right there when it comes to transportation. So a few things to highlight on this report, besides the six sections that we have, we have added section number five, Facility Capital Projects, that are outside URA. The URA report continues to be by itself and sent along report that you should have received that as well today. We sent it up to the, up to April 7 with all the information on the project, on those projects. We are about to finalize most of our commitment for URA projects. The main project is the center, and I believe we're doing very well. We're still on the schedule, we're ahead of schedule, and we hope that we can finalize all our commitments for this venue ahead of schedule. With regards to a few highlights on transportation, I would like to start with White Mill Road, a project that was fully, the subbase was recreated, was, we did a full-depth reclamation, which is called FDR. The project is fully paved now, and the final striping should be in place within the next two, three weeks. And besides that, we're also going to be doing other improvements to ensure that the road is safer. We're going to put, we're going to post some speed signs as well as all the Chevron signs that allow drivers to know that we have vertical curbs or horizontal curves. Also, the letting of Campbellton and Stonewall Tale intersection improvement, it's underway, Clear and Gravin is underway, and we hope that we can move as fast as we can on that project. The Dampford Road sidewalks was also led to, we issued a kick-off meeting. We are about to finalize the schedule with the contractor and issue the NTP to the vendor. We were successful in finalizing the inner road speed study, and we have made a recommendation to Georgia DOT to lower the speed, the posted speed from 45 to 35 miles per hour. As soon as we receive a response from Georgia DOT, we will inform PD and others, and hopefully it's a positive response so that we can get into the road and change all the posted speed signs that we have. Also, we have a new signal installed already that we've worked that out with Georgia DOT at State Route 138 and Bayside Road. The new signal was installed, some ADI ramps were installed. We're just on the last stages of getting power for those signals. And then the signal will be our bag right now, and it will continue to be bagged until there's power to those signals. Upon power being on, the signal will start flashing for about 30 days, which is called a burning period. After that, the signal will come out and we'll hope that this intersection is much safer. Besides that, if you have any questions, I can answer or just allow our consultants on the paving management that it's going to take a bit longer on the presentation, but I'll be here to assist them as well.
Councilwoman Willis?
Mr. Valenzuela, are we still on track with these LET dates for these roundabouts, city roundabouts? I know the last work session, I went through each one in my district, and I wouldn't, I'm not going to go through that today, but I just want to make sure that we're still on track.
As far as Public Works' concerns, yes, we are on track.
For example, one I pulled up was Butler and Union Road. It says target LET date is April 2023, that's this month. Total parcels, 11, acquired 10, remaining 1. So are we still on track?
Yes, ma'am. The project, the ITV was submitted to our procurement department for our test as soon as they do their part, and we should be coming up with, after being bid out, we should be coming up with a recommendation for the lowest bidder and proceed with construction.
Okay. All right. I'll get a meeting with Mr. Tombs and you next week to go over these different items in District Three to make sure we're still on track. The only other thing I would ask, if we could get a better handle on these different utility projects that's happening throughout the city, so that we can alert our residents when they're happening? And then when they tear, when they tear up our roads for whatever utility work they're doing, who is supposed to be following up behind these utility companies to make sure that they restore it back to the condition that it was? Because they're bringing in a lot of heavy trucks and, you know, they're tearing, they're doing a lot of, and most of it is the grid project where they're taking the wires and putting them underground. But we need some timing on when these projects are going to start in so that we can communicate to our residents. Because I get questions on how long is it going to take? How long is it going to, you know, impede traffic? Which I'm happy for, the grid upgrade, because it's desperately needed, but it's not a good feeling when we can't respond to residents on how long it's going to take and if they're going to restore our curb appeal back to what it was and the streets back to what it was.
Yeah, you stand corrected, Ms. Willis. There's a letter that we're preparing for those utility companies that are working on our roads. Our intention is to request from them to restore the rightsway that have impacted. Some, in some cases, drainage has been impacted, edge of asphalt roads have been impacted, and sidewalks as well. So there's a letter that is going to go through them requesting that upon the completion of their jobs, work that they're performing, that they need to restore to prior conditions.
Are they communicating with you or the city when they have these major projects going on in our city?
It's very difficult. We receive one time their schedule, but as you know, that schedule has blown from the date that we receive, but we're constantly on them. They have numerous subcontractors working for them, so it's making it a bit difficult to really follow through the, all the details that we have. But we have our utility coordinator, as well as Mr. Martinez, been on top of all those utility issues that we have.
Because I'm finding out they're doing work by just pulling over on the side of the road, asking them what they're doing. And it just seems like they would have a little, they would have more formal communication with the city on what they're doing, when they're going to start the work, where they're going to be, and when it's anticipated to commence. I understand that they're dealing with inclement weather, but to have no communication is unacceptable.
Yeah, it is a challenge. You stand absolutely correct. But we're doing everything we can to get with them. It's one of our primary concerns to ensure that they do their part and they allow us to do because they're also impacting, we have issues with litter, we have issues with right-of-way maintenance in some of those areas. So we'll be getting with them.
Okay. And my last question is around the litter. Have you had any luck with, because you said you were going to hire four more people to help us with the right-of-way cleanup? And do we have someone that's constantly going around checking the trash receptacles on the right-of-ways? Because I'm constantly having to send in requests to have those emptied.
Yes, ma'am. We have added our staff. We actually have Broadview that picks up. Our staff does it twice a week now. And we are making offers to four employees that we hope that if everything goes okay with HR, we should be bringing them in-house in the next three, four weeks. Hopefully, all the documentation goes straight forward, and we're looking forward. And then we're going to dedicate those four employees to hot areas that we know where little pickup is much needed.
Okay. Yes.
If I may, in my city manager's report, I noticed litter initiatives. At our next work session, my plan was to do a complete presentation on our litter initiatives.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I know that Mr. Tombs, I think she mentioned it to you, but I just want to let the council know that Public Works has moved to the Botright Facility. Now we're house out there, so we have all our operations and the staff that we have. And we'll be doing much better, I believe, as well as, I'm sure that some of the phone calls have been an issue for some, but our intention is that everybody that has a phone will be responding to the phone calls.
All right. Thank you.
Councilman Sebastian?
Thank you, Mayor. Sir Antonio, thank you much for your presentation. I won't keep you long. Thank you for the work that is happening on White Mill. I know it's not finished, but already residents are complaining about speeding, right? So I hope we can do some stuff to let people know it's not okay. It's been just replaced, but it's not okay to speed still. Jones Road was closed last Friday. I attempted to go down Jones Road last Friday, and to my surprise, it was closed. That's at the end of Cedar Grove and Jones Road?
Right.
And that's on as if it's Union City. So is there no communication with us when they're closing off Jones Road? Because I know they have construction in the area.
They typically do communicate with us, but I have not seen a call from them that they were going to close. We do the same thing. We're going to close the road with, you know, we work with our communications to make sure that there's communication amongst the cities, but I will definitely follow up with them.
And when they do, just let me know so I can let the folks in District Four know as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Also, you know, while I have the mic, I really want to send condolences to the Miles family. I know everyone heard about the accident on Cedar Grove Road last Friday. Me and my colleagues, I think we got something from our fire chief, but there was a, there was a bad accident on River Town Road in which a young lady died. Sorry, on Cedar Grove Road in which a young lady died. And I continue to appeal to folks that we have to be careful of our behavior on the road too, to be kind to each other on the road.
Okay. All right, seeing no further questions or comments, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is also under Public Works' paving conditions presentation. I believe Mr. Valenzuela is going to introduce Mr. Morgan and Mr. Gardner, who are available online.
Mayor and council, this is one of the, hope that you like this presentation. This should allow all council and residents to see why we're re-milling and overlaying some of the roads and the current conditions of our roads. And for your surprise, we're doing very well. And the technical information that you will receive, it is for you. We're going to make this available to you all. We plan on posting on the website as well. As you know, for our goal to start resurfacing for T-Sploes two projects, it was broken down in three tiers, 23, 24, and 25. And the intention is to, as soon as the bid is out, that we have a lowest bidder recommendation for those three years. And for the tier one, that starts in 23, it starts on the summer, so we can complete by the fallers. So with that said, I will allow First Step and the consultants that are online to do the presentation, and then afterwards, we'll welcome any questions that you may have.
Well, thank you very much. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir. We can hear you.
Okay. Can you see my screen?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. My name is Darrell Gardner, and with us as well is Mr. Mike Morgan, and we're very happy to be here today. We'll try to get this as quickly as possible, but I feel like before we can talk about the data that we've gathered, just tell you a little bit about how it's collected, who we are, so it can help us maybe better understand what's yet to come. So first off, First Step Pavement Management isn't a company. It is a group of individuals, professionals, just saw a need to help our cities and counties. Department of Transportation's have pavement management programs, and they have certain standards that they have to meet, but they don't particularly apply to a city or county. Different kinds of traffic altogether, traffic patterns, the way we build them. And so we wanted to maybe come up with something that met the criteria, the needs of a city a little bit better. So having said that, consists of Dr. Stacy Williams. She's at the University of Arkansas Civil Engineering Research Center. Every state has their educator that really helps out with, some states have more than one, obviously, but Dr. Williams is, has been such a crucial person to have, an education of pavement management, of really everything having to do with the infrastructure that Public Works has. And so her unbiased voice was very valuable to us, and she was an integral part of the team. Michael Morgan, he's with Datastream, he is on this call. Mike... Mike, um, was tasked with the whole data collection process. And so he is, uh, really, really came up with a very good technique and system to make very good information available to us. And then I finally, I'm Daryl Gardner, I work with Ergon Asphalt and Emulsions. Um, I'm more of a boots-on-the-ground guy, so, uh, I understand pavements and, and kind of when we see certain levels of distresses and the types of those distresses, you know, kind of what treatments? What is the right fix for those pavements? And so that's our team, um, that kind of started this whole ball rolling, I guess I should say. But we u- we utilize that ASTMD six-four-three-three as our data collection methodology. And with a little bit difference, uh, there's some differences in that we're gonna assess a hundred percent of your network rather than taking sample areas and extrapolating it out, uh, to represent the whole. We're just gonna take, take that guesswork out and drive a hundred percent of your network. Hundred percent of your network. It is given back to you as in three forms, geolocated video, there is a condition map, pavement management workbook, and we will review all of those. Uh, some of our goals that we had, uh, and, and I'm just gonna really highlight some of these. We wanted very transparent information because if it's transparent, then we can all see the same information and we can review it and we can talk about it equally. And it also helps the, the data to be very accountable. If it's very transparent, then you can see whether it's right, whether it's wrong, whether there's problems. And so we really wanted to have the means of making very transparent information so that when you see the data, then you can believe it, that it's true. If we gave you big books of information, it wouldn't be very transparent. Um, we're all different, so we wanna, some people like the maps, some people like to, to look at the video. Some people are more data-driven and wanna, wanna go through those workbooks. So we, we report it back in those three different mediums. Uh, we're a little bit different in that we also provide operational data for your street department to work with. So that this, just the information, we'll see that as we start presenting some of this information. But, um, when you get a lot of information that we can maybe hopefully be more efficient with the way we address potholes, for instance, or structural problems that are out there. Because we're gonna be able to see the entire network of those, uh, those issues. We wanted to be very economical. One of the issues that I see in, in, in smaller agencies, and when I say smaller, I mean, not DOTs, but cities and counties, are that, you know, we don't get data often enough, you know? Um, a lot of the systems want you to get that data every five years. And I can assure you that pavements change a lot in five years' time to where after, you get into year three or four and the data is not gonna be, uh, it's gonna be hard to predict what that pavement really is. You almost have to drive out and look at it again. So by making a, an economic point where, and this is what, uh, Mr. Morgan has done, is to make it quicker to get the data, get very accurate data quicker, then now the price point's lower so we can get our data more often. So we're, we're actually dealing with actual data more than we are predictive, trying, trying to predict what the pavement's gonna be like. And then finally, we want it to be historical. Everybody's gonna sit in all of our seats one day doing the same work that we're doing for the city of South Fulton. And we just want to have a historical data, that this is where we were, these are the projects that we did, these are the changes we saw, these are our growth areas, and have that historical information so that those that come behind us have that history of what's been done, uh, with your streets in South Fulton. Uh, this is kind of a view, uh, of all three, um, uh, viewing mediums that we have. As you have, here's what the driver is actually seeing, the, the inspector that's gathering the data. And with that, he creates these condition maps. There's gonna be a lot of information that's gathered. It then goes into this workbook so we can sort that information and use it. By the way, all this is, it works with each other. You can see that this highlighted road here, if we clicked on that road, it would find it on this map. And then we could drive the video, so it all works together. It's all the same information. And so what is our goal and how do we empower people to be successful is, you know, we really, and this, this is, this has been, it's been founded as a, as a principle of pavement management for a long time, is that we have to interact earlier with our pavements. We have to move away from this worst-first philosophy where we wait till our roads get bad and then we spend our, our capital on those, to one of having more tools in our toolbox to where we try to keep our, our good pavements good. And so by having data that can tell us where these pavements are on a regression curve, then we can hopefully be better stewards of our money, add more service life, uh, into our network and have better roads for less money. Um, we do encourage some simple metrics. We have to know if we're gonna be successful if we do this. I hope that everybody wants to be successful. And so we have some metrics to answer that question, am I being successful? I do know that we spend all of our money on projects that are needed, but just, but that doesn't mean that we're, uh, particularly gonna be successful. So we, we try to take some, some metrics of success and apply those. And if we're not, and for, then we can, maybe we don't have enough, uh, revenue to start with, but if we do, let's reprioritize and let's improve. Um, other services that can be provided, but that's not what we're here for. So in the condition maps that are to follow, when we talk about South Fulton's, uh, condition data, I want you to look at, this is an asphalt regression curve, meaning, and so these colors are gonna be important. And, and we hope that it's very intuitive that green is good, red is bad. And so as we, as we go down this regression curve, you can see it goes from zero to one hundred. See these numbers, it's a pavement condition index, where when a pavement is brand-new, it has a one-hundred PCI. It won't be long before it'll start seeing age and cracks. And as it does that, it's gonna fall into these, this good category. We're gonna start seeing maybe some construction joints. I have seen that, uh, throughout your city, maybe, uh, some other cracks that start forming. And those will ultimately turn into some structural problems, increased cracking as we go, come down the regression curve. And when we see those distresses, it's gonna fall into this different PCI category of fair condition. If we allow that to continue on, we'll start seeing some more isolated and mass structural problems that are right here in this area, right here. And, and this is critical because our delay penalty becomes really great here. Once a pavement is lost, there's not really a huge delay penalty. The, the fix is the same. We're gonna have to do some major rehab and reconstruction to it. Whereas right here, we can still, if, uh, we can still do something to salvage that pavement before we get into those more expensive costs. But, but pay attention to these colors, cause that's what you're gonna see in the data that we're gonna present. And I just wanna say that, you know, this, if you look at this, this is a thirty-year, uh, span of time right here. And again, this is a hot mixed regression curve. If this was concrete, this regression curve would be far out here, um, over its life. But, you know, we have choices. We can work, interact with our pavements early, or we can wait longer to interact with them. And so we do know that we have some, some pavements that are down here. And I think that you guys are doing a wonderful plan to address those, and we're gonna look at that as well. One thing I did wanna point out with the kind of data that, uh, Mr. Morgan has developed, uh, for us to look at is, in the old ways, we might, might would take a sample area here and here and here and here. And we would, we'd take a deep dive into that pavement and we would come up with what that pavement condition index is. Then we would average them. And so this whole segment of road here might be one long yellow line. And that's why it doesn't work. It may work on airfields and it may work in certain places, but, but that's why we wanted to change the way we gather data. We know that this end of the pavement is not the same as this end of the pavement. And so as the condition of the pavement changes, we want to show that, uh, so that this is what we call dynamic segmentation. So you get a lot more granular detail of what's really going on, uh, with your pavements. Uh, some of the information that we do gather are the level of cracking that you have. You can see these spare condition pavements. The cracking has broadened out into where we're seeing medium to high-density pavements. There's just more cracks versus these green areas where it's surface L, low-density cracks. We don't have many of them. This might be suited more for a crack city in operation where this might be more suited for a global preservation treatment. So we really do track the level of cracking because we know the longer these cracks stay open, we're gonna start seeing structural problems. So we're just tracking the regression of our pavements. As, uh, we ask, we track the structural integrity of your pavement. Uh, these are all isolated structural icons and that's because they're on a decent road with maybe a couple of critical spots. Uh, we'll also track mass structural and we'll show you some of that on your information here shortly, uh, which is gonna show us that it's, it's now, the, the pavement is becoming a lot, being structural problems are being more of the, uh, a, a condition of what that pavement is, rather than it being isolated in nature. It's becoming more representative of what the pavement is. Uh, and then we have potholes. Of course, we know that's where you're getting a lot of calls. These are action points. Again, we're gonna track all those. We have two types here. You have the major potholes that the public calls in, uh, that you guys respond to every single day. And we also have, uh, what we call a pothole two, which might be an edge condition. It's something that the public's not gonna call in about, but at the same time, we do know that it's important. If they're out there fixing a pothole, go ahead and shore up some of those edge conditions. And finally, we, we gather, uh, some drainage information. Uh, and it's, it's not to find all your drainage issues, trust me on that. But it, it is, while he's out there, if he can see that we have standing water in a ditch or we see sediment on a pavement or we see, uh, standing water, uh, we're gonna report that back to you. Just so you can, if you, if there's something that surprises you, you can go take a look at it. So there's different ways, there's a, pavement management isn't one thing. It's a lot of different activities that we do. And so we really wanna, the, the data helps us take our entire network and look at it. One thing about the T-Splus program, we're really focusing on these impactful delay penalties, uh, that you have. And so we're going to, uh, get into that as well. Uh, if, if, if there's, if this is a good stopping point to take some questions, we can take them. If not, we can, uh, move forward with some other information. I'm gonna just keep on going.
All right, thank you, sir.
So this is, so we, this is your workbook. And so all that information that we're, that we're gonna look at gets compiled in here. And this has all of your, all of your streets, uh, the, the districts that they're in, speed limits, um, where they start, where they end, their, their functional classification. And then we couple all this data with it. So if you look over here, you can see the lineal feet of each condition, uh, that's in there. Doesn't mean these are all together, but this does represent the amount of good on this pavement, the fair, the critical. And all that helps us determine this pavement condition index. If we keep going out, we see the, all the distresses that we gathered, all the actionable items that make up, uh, this, this entire assessment that we've done. Uh, we've got some other tools out here. Out here, some project planning tools, but just so you kind of understand what's going into the workbook. Um, this is a summary of the information that was gathered that Antonio was talking about that we've, that we've gone out and done this assessment. Let me just say that this seventy-eight point two, uh, network level PCI, that is a very good number. And so I tip my hat, it's a, it's a very good number for an entire network, especially one that's as growing and has as much traffic demands as the city of South Fulton has. Uh, there are better in the world, let me just say, with, they don't have the demands you have and that is a very good network. You have fifty-five percent of your network, over half of it's, it's in, uh, excellent or good condition. And so, um, I, I just wanna lift that up. This is a metric of success, so over time, as we gather information, we wanna see this number go higher. It can go lower, it doesn't mean the world's falling apart if it goes lower, but, but we don't wanna see a trend where it keeps going lower. Well, this is kind of one metric of, this is where we are today. Are we gonna keep it there? Are we gonna improve it or is it getting worse? So it's a metric of, of success is what it is, just a metric to look at. And then as Antonio said, you have the six-hundred-and-fifteen equivalent two-lane centerline miles. And you can see the miles associated with each condition here. It is, it is just information, um, different ways of looking at this information. We also broke your information out into the districts so that every district, uh, those of you sitting in this room, this means more to you, uh, than it may me, but this is each of your districts and how the information's broke out. Again, every PCI, uh, is, is greater than a seventy-five. And a seventy-five is a good PCI number. It's a pavement condition index that is, it's not to the good category, but it's very close to it. It's right below it. And so you can just kind of look at this. And what that tells me is that the work is being distributed fairly and that, um, uh, you can see the miles that you have, some, some districts have more miles. But same time, I, I, I just wanna point out that it does show that we have, you know, everybody's got some lost, everybody's got some excellent, and it very, looks very balanced to me just looking at it. Having said that, let's move on to your actual data.
Mayor.
And look at some of that. This is your, uh,
We can't even see the presentation. So I, I mean, I just, I think this is important.
Hold, hold on one second. You just, you, you wanna ask for a point of information?
Yes.
I was just texting you, Mr. Clerk. We, we do have ten minutes for each of these presentations. I'm not sure how many slides you have left, uh, sir, but it is hard for us to see the presentation. Um, some people that are watching at home can probably see it more clearly. Uh, if, if you could just maybe give us two more minutes?
Let me just wrap it up.
Then we'll follow up with any questions that we have.
Point of information, Mayor.
The chair recognizes Councilwoman Willis.
What's the point? We can't follow, we can't see, we can't see anything, we can't follow anything. So, I mean, I, I mean, it would've been nice for us to even get this much information that's possibly, that's being, that's being presented to us before. I, I'm sitting, we're sitting here and we've been sitting here for ten minutes. And I just feel like it's a waste of our time and a constituent's time because we can't see anything. We can't follow anything. We don't understand what's going on.
Is, is that the consensus of the council?
Yes.
Can you not see what, what's on my screen? I'm sorry.
I'm gonna ask, if you just give me one second, I'm gonna ask for a show of hands if that is the consensus of the council, that they are not following this presentation.
I'm not totally following, but I do understand some hands. Not totally.
Okay, it, it looks like we're, we're pretty evenly split. Uh, was this not, was some version of this presentation not included in the work session packet?
No, not any of it.
No, uh, we're gonna make it available, but we want, because it's very complex, uh, information. Uh, once you see it, then, uh, you're gonna have it, uh, all of you are gonna have it so you can, uh, w- work with it, play with it and understand better.
So I,
There will be a link.
Okay, so, 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 I've got the floor. Let, let me make this note to everyone that is presenting to our council. If you're ever presenting to the council, uh, this screen is far away for some of our council members and they cannot, uh, see the screen, they cannot see the detail. It may be far away for some of our constituents, even though they can walk up closer to the screen. So if you have a, a presentation that you're making, no matter how complex, if you could include it in the packet, we would not only be able to give you some questions beforehand to help focus the presenter on the things that are of greatest importance to the council, but it will be easier for us to follow along, um, those of us who are having trouble seeing the screen. The chair recognizes Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown.
Is, is, I think part of the problem, at least from this angle, is all I can see are the overhead lights. Well, I can see the, the lights are cutting the picture, so there's a glare. Can the screen be repositioned? Because I think whoever comes up to make a presentation, it's gonna be the same problem because of the lights and the glare. If we don't have the presentation already.
And sir, wh- while we're, while we're adjusting the screen, if you could perhaps adjust your presentation to just give us, uh, the, the sixty-second summary, uh, and then we will, we will follow up with, uh, questions that we might have about paving.
Do, Oh, that made it worse.
So, ultimately, I was, we were,
Just give us one second, sir, just give us, we're, we're, uh, you can't see what we're doing in here, but we're adjusting the screen and maybe we're gonna try, uh, adjusting one of these lights, turning out one of these lights, uh, for the remainder of this presentation. So you got some time to, to gather up your, your summary.
I think it really needs to be tilted forward to take the, cause when he did that, yes, see in that position, I can see it now. Or, or, Do we, do we need a five-minute recess while we try to work this out?
That's a bad,
Do you all see, do you all have a glare on your side?
I can see.
We're gonna email to you the link of the entire presentation. If you wanna allow him a couple of minutes to summarize his presentation, would be good. So once you have the link with you, you're gonna have much better and easy follow-up on your own.
All right, sir, uh, we're ready. If you could just give us sixty seconds of the bullet points and we may have some follow-up questions for you.
Okay. So basically, uh, I just wanted to say, show you the transparency of the information. This is White Mill Road before it was paved. So we'll have that, that video information of just why that project was selected. We also incorporated in all of your, um, T-Splus, uh, projects for, o- over the years that are, that are to come so that we could click on any subdivision. are to come, so that we could click on any subdivision, we could look at this job, if we wanted to click on any roads within here, we could click on them, and it'll tell you the start and stop points of the T-Splosh projects, how many miles, the amount of materials that's going to be used. And so, really, we just, and, and what we found is that in every one of these projects, if we were to look at it, and then we were to take off the, the highlight there, what we're seeing is that our data really matched up well with the decisions that are being made. All these pavements have some sort of structural component, and we were just really pleased with, with how, when we look at this, this information, we start seeing pavements that are further down the regression curve, and so, Antonio and his group is really, they've really selected a lot of great projects to be selected, to, to be picked for T-Splosh that's going to really improve your overall network. And I was just pleased with how well the data matched up with it. You know, we can look at this information and, and just see that he's, he's really attacking some of the roads that probably maybe are receiving some of the complaints, but when we picked up the projects and looked at them, we could match them up with the condition data, and it really, it's really going to be good for the city of South Fulton, and we were pleased with just how spot-on these decisions are. But having said that, I, I could have shown you some, what a, what a good road, fair road, and, and the transparency of the information, but I think if, if we're having a hard time viewing things, it's probably best not to view it. So, and I do apologize for that, I was not aware that the council could not see what I was presenting.
All right, I'm going to open the floor for any questions. Councilman Sebastian, are you in the queue, or is this from?
I wasn't in the queue, Mayor. Thank you. Mr. Antonio, is this something that we can get presented to us in small groups where we can see out of our computer? Because clearly, it looks like interested information, and I know you're showing this to us because you have some sort of end in mind. So, if we have to make some sort of decision based on information like this, I would love to see, because this, this is not a PDF-type document, because it looks like an active GIS something that's going on there. So, it's not just a, you know, PDF document that it looks like we can get.
No, it, it, it is not. You, you will be able to see by video the actual conditions of the roads as December of twenty twenty-two. And the primary reason of this analysis was to ensure that on the upcoming three years, T-Splosh projects that we have about fifteen to sixteen million dollars, that we have picked the worst conditions and going to second year, the subsequent, and third year subsequent. So, you will see that there's not such a thing that we pick up roads from District Two instead of District Seven or District Three and so on. We picked up the worst conditions going to repair on Year One, then Year Two, and Year Three. But you will have access to the, it's a massive data, you will have it, it's like a video with all the information on it. I will have the final deliverables, I have books that I have, I'm going to work with a consultant to ensure that you'll have a book, so you have a, as you reference as well, and the data will be there, and then you'll have your book as well to take whenever you want to go to a public meeting or so on.
All right, thank you, he was turning on, on, on and off some layers. I, I wish I could make out what the different layers that he was turning on and off, right?
Right, that's correct.
I just, I just couldn't. But, that said, hopefully, we can get it presented to us differently another time.
I, I wasn't aware either, because I was looking at the screen, and, and I was able to see on both of screens very well. How do you know that you couldn't see anything on, on the front, front TV?
All right. Councilwoman Willis?
So, this company isn't repairing our roads, we're paying them to monitor our roads?
No, what they did is paving assessment condition of the existing roads of six hundred and fifteen miles. They don't, they make recommendations, and they provide a paving condition index that goes from zero to one hundred.
So, so how much are we paying them? Is it annually, monthly, quarterly, how much?
It was under twenty-five thousand, I believe, and that's the final stage of this study.
Is that annually twenty-five thousand?
No, one time.
Once a year?
No, no, one time for the full assessment.
For the full assessment, twenty-five thousand?
Yeah.
Okay. And what about, how are we assessing like the tickets that are in CCLX fixed? Because we have some tickets going back that haven't been addressed for two years.
Right.
That's, that's, that we're seeking road, road repair for.
Yes, those tickets that you, that you, we have are not being repaired, actually reflects now on the study. So, the study tells us that besides what you have on CCLX fixed, you also have other roads that need to be repaired. So, it provides us information that we don't need to get a call, and the hope is that now that we're in a position to hire a dedicated contractor for repairs, we can issue task orders and get those resolved ahead, ahead of us receiving the calls.
So, and you, and, and it is your recommendation that we go with this service versus residents who actually live on the street and that can report that their street is in bad, that their street is in disrepair?
So, the, what you do is like typically, if you're going to do any paving repairs, you're going to have like hours, you know, at this time between T-Splus One and T-Splus Two, we're probably going to have about fifty-plus million dollars that we invested on, on repaving our, our roads. So, this study, in lieu of the one that we've done it on twenty-twenty under our prior vendor, this is hand-on-hand going T-Splus Two, the data is right there, we're actually doing the roads and subdivisions that are to be on the list as priorities.
I see. So, when we did T-Splosh Two, we went through a, a, a assessment, and then we identified the roads that's going to be paved on the T-Splosh Two under the assessment. And so, what's this assessment for?
So, T, T-Splus Two was done based on experience. We walked the sites, we walked the, the roads, but we didn't do a technical evaluation like they did. Those roads were actually videotaped, six hundred and fifteen miles, they videotaped every single one, and they come out with all the technical information, which it matches with what we had. So, with us, it's doing this kind of job for years, it kind of gives us the PCI of what a road would be at. But having the technical documentation, it is a backup information for us as engineers that we are, to ensure that we're doing the right thing.
So, so just for clarification, and then our yield, when we did the T-Splosh Two, we identified the streets that's going to be paved for T-Splosh Two, you're saying staff made those assessments?
That's correct.
And so, now, we have collected about seventeen million dollars, and we're asking for the schedule of when we're going to start rolling out the T-Splosh Two pavement. And so, we're using the study, but we've already identified the streets, and this study is coming after the, after the, after we've already identified T-Splosh projects.
Right, but what it does is that you, we have about for T-Splus Two, you have about fif, sixteen million dollars worth of projects that are going to be done in three years. This study tells us beyond the sixteen million dollars, this study tells us that as you've done T-Splus One, you need to come back and don't let your roads to be in worse conditions. You start doing the repairs when your paving condition is at sixty. Right now, we're doing at thirty, at forty, and fifty, roads that are in need to be rebuilt. But what we want to do is with the study, say, we're going to do preventium for those roads, so we can let our roads last longer of what they used to last.
So, for clarification, T-Splosh Two projects, we're going to go ahead and handle the pavement for those projects that have been identified based on the city's assessment?
Based on the city's assessment.
And then.
And also, this study, so they, there's an ITV that was sent to purchasing for three years paving, for resurfacing of three years' worth of projects, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. So, all that we've done before, it now has the technical backup information, and anything that we missed it, we're going to handle it during those three years. So, it goes hand-on-hand, yes.
Okay. Our yield?
Okay, I, I'm going to have you in the queue right after Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown. Before I go to her, though, I do want to just note, we do have a separate CCLX presentation coming up at the end of the work session, and I would just like to ask a, a couple of clarifying questions that I, that I think may elucidate the understanding of the council. You are saying that this is, the, the projects are the projects. Does this assessment help you prioritize the projects, like which ones go first, second, third?
Yes, it does. So, we've done our own assessment as well as the technical information. It's like when you go and look at a bridge, the bridge is about to fall.
No, I, no, I got it, I got it. It, it, so, yeah, the answer is yes. The twenty-five thousand that we paid previously was for T-Splus One or T-Splus Two?
It is for the six hundred and fifteen miles of roads that we have. So, this is study that you, we almost finished, it, it brings up everything that we've done under T-Splus One as well.
So, if, so the twenty-five thousand that we paid previously was for T-Splus One, this will be for T-Splus Two?
It, it is for, T-Splus Two, it is within the six hundred and fifteen miles, right? So, we have assessed the entire city of South Fulton. So, the project that we've done on T-Splus One, the PCI is now, and some of them are sixty. Four, five years ago, we're eighty, ninety, now are going down to sixty. So, those roads all were assessed now. That's where our paving condition index throughout the city is at seventy-eight point two, which is pretty good. Nobody else in, in Georgia has that PCI.
And so, to be clear, zero is bad and one hundred is good? It's like a regular.
A one hundred is a new road, perhaps Button or Somwattel, those roads that we just completed, it's a one, one hundred.
And then, just one final question, have we not done any paving for T-Splosh Two projects?
Not yet. All the, the, we just started collecting the funding in April of last year. This is just, we just finished the first year collection. So, we need the funding in order to advance projects. So, we're going to advance about six million dollars worth of projects for this year. In addition, we're already doing some construction projects for T-Splus Two, they're shovel-ready projects. So, it's a mix of projects, a mix of funding that we're trying to, to get in on hand so we can let it. As, as on prior years, what we've done for T-Splus One, and the one year we put worth of, two years' worth of projects, right? But that was a lot of work. I don't have enough stuff right there. So, this year, going forward, we're just measuring ourselves and doing what we have with the resources that we have, so we're going to do it in three years, so that way we can complete what we promised you in that year, then we'll move on to the next year. And any minor repairs or sections of the roads that need to be repaired that have been done right there for past two years and not done before, we're going to do it, hopefully, having a contractor on hand, we can move on.
All right, it's, 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 I hear you. It's, it's just a slightly alarming misnomer to have this list from July of last year that says twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-seven, and we're halfway through twenty-twenty-three, and we haven't started the list. I mean, maybe that's just routine, but it's just that, I think that's some of the, a bit of the confusion. Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown, and then I'm coming to you, Dr. L.
Thank you. And to the mayor's point, I think the question everyone really cares about is how soon are these roads going to get paved? I mean, so, the, the interactive GIS and all of these details are great, but when is the paving going to start?
The invitation to bid was sent to our procurement office for advertising. They advertised, they received the quotes, the lowest bidders were ready to commence in the summer. That was our goal, and we still would love to meet that goal for the summer, for twenty-twenty-three resurfacing projects. We have about five subdivisions that we inherited from Fulton County that did not have toppings, the final layer of asphalt. Those roads are in desperate need to be repaired, resurfaced, in addition to some corridors and subdivisions that we have recommended for twenty-twenty-three.
So realistically, where are we in the bid process? And I'm asking this because, as you know, I've got the Oaks at Flat Shoals that's been trying to get roads paved.
Forever.
For two years, at least. So, I've got to have specifics.
I will definitely work with our finance director, who leads the procurement division. I have been in contact with her and asking her that I do want to have those ITVs yesterday, so I can go to resurface those roads.
Rell?
Thank you for your presentation. I think to give everybody the answers they need, if you could take that T-Splosh Two list and butt it up against the year, because they always happen, the paving always happens in the summertime. If we knew twenty-twenty-three, these are the subdivisions, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five, over that T-Splosh Two list, because I think that's, that's something we can communicate to our constituents, so they at least have some timeline, I think that would get us to where we need to be, at least understanding. And I think just, this is back to education to the public about how this money flows into the city. Even though we vote on it, we don't have the money that day. I think more education needs to happen on that front, just observation.
Yeah, you stand corrected, Ms. Rell, and I failed to say that I wanted to have this presentation for you all before presenting to you what the roads are going to be resurfaced in twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. Now that you have this presentation, we're going to email to you all the data, let me email to you, but no later than Monday, and then you will have a memo with what projects are going, have been recommended for twenty-three to twenty-five.
Can I, can I do a follow-up? Mr. Valens Weyla, the way this information will be presented, will it, it really gives us a, a basis to communicate with our constituents, right? That while we're prioritizing which ones get done by year based on this PCI?
PCI.
PCI score, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Dr. L. Councilwoman Willis, you're in the queue again.
This is my last question, has the street repaving solicitation gone out?
It is with our procurement office. I will refer, defer that to our director, finance director, who leads the procurement office.
My apologies, which, which?
Has the solicitation, has the solicitation for the street paving or repair gone out?
I wasn't prepared for that response tonight, but I'll take a look in the bid system to check on that item.
Okay, so, Mr., thank you. Mr. Toms, what we did ask for in this council, it was a consensus vote that asked when solicitations or RFPs go out, that the city manager and the council is copied, because we don't have access to bidding it. And we do that, we're asking that for various reasons, so that we can protect ourselves and not have conversations we're not supposed to have when the RFP becomes active, and so that we can have awareness of what's going out. And for some reason, that, that stopped.
You, are you done, Councilwoman Willis? All right, few follow-up questions, thank you, this presentation was super informative. Next Step is the name of the company, correct?
First Step.
Thank you, First Step. First Step. The, the, do they also, I'm going to go back to my rural friends in Cedar Grove and Fife, do they assess gravel and unpaved roads?
No gravel roads, this is, oh.
Yes.
Paved roads.
He just said yes, you said no.
But now, they, they don't provide.
We did not hear.
They don't provide paving condition index because it's not paved.
Got you. So they assess it, but they don't score it?
Right, it's a gravel road, our roads is just to assess the paving condition, the paved roads.
All right, I'm going to amplify Dr. R's point. We've had this discussion around sidewalks, you know, and URAs about making sure, like, you know, we have some, I believe that the end of any public works presentation, the final slide should just be a list of projects, a date when the ground will be broken, and a date when we expect it to be complete. Like we won't, you know, if it goes past that date. But that's, that's all our residents really wanna know. They wanna be able to look at a list, find their street, find out when it's gonna start, when it's gonna end. That also helps people in terms of, you know, planning their traffic and things like that, right? So, and if you wanna add the, if you wanna add the score on there, that would be great too. But I, I do wanna have a bit of a courageous conversation now about our strategic plan, right? We, we set out a few months ago to bring the services that we are outsourcing to Jacobs in-house. I think that there was an assumption that we would be bringing all of these services in-house. And if it was not an assumption of anyone else, it was an assumption of mine. But it appears that we are, so just, can you, can you talk about that? How many, we brought the services that we provided by Jacobs in-house, but it appears that we are still using contractors for a variety of things. And what is, what is the strategic plan to, to, to set up a sovereign public works department that does not rely on all of these different vendors to outsource?
We've done, last year, through the meetings that we, that we held with all the council, before going into the October 22 new budget, explained that we've done a fist analysis of what will take to do in-house, and what will the city benefit better. And we thought that a hybrid approach was the best approach for the city, once that we provide better services during, on that motion. It is more economical, the city does not have a public works location, we don't have the heavy equipment, we don't have mechanics, we don't have resources, we don't have many things that we would love to have it. But these days, when you look at any public works department, it's a hybrid approach where we're saving more funds and we're providing better services. I think what we had before, before October of 2022, compared to what we have now, if you look at the, at the report and what we're providing to you when it comes to rights with maintenance, it is a whole, a whole difference. Back in, before October, Campbell Creek was a mess, Campbellton Road, Fayetteville Road was a mess, Roosevelt Highway was a mess, Old National Highway was in distress, and I think we've done many things.
Yes, I wanna keep us on time, and I'll just, I'll just close with this. In the same way that there, there is a, that there's maybe a timeline, final sheet that our constituents would like to see, I would be interested in some sort of timeline sheet that shows all, a spreadsheet that shows all the sort, the services that we're outsourcing and the projected date to bring them in-house, even if it's years out, right? Just so, so we can, just something visual to see, that would be very helpful for me. Dr. R.
Just to clarify, and I think Mr. Valens Weyla said or mentioned this, when we had this discussion, I think it even started at our retreat, he always talked about a hybrid model with employees and contractors, and we went over that pretty extensively. It may be beneficial for the public to know this information, but we, we never envisioned that all these employees would become employees of the city based on that discussion. And I think, well, not everybody was here, but most of the people in this room were here for that, that conversation.
All right, thank you. Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is under Roman numeral four, Presentations Part One. The first presentation will be Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program Overview and Update. This will be presented by Corinne Smoot, Special Projects Coordinator, City Manager's Office.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. I pray that everyone has been marked safe from the Freaknik document. This is a good thing. All right, pull up the presentation and get into it. All right, CDBG. Oh, CDBG. All right, so CDBG, for those who are not aware, is the Community Development Block Grant. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna do a brief overview of, of the grant itself. We'll go into the purpose, then we'll go into the overview of the amounts that we've been awarded, go over some basic requirements. We'll talk about the different plans and all the things that go into pulling the information together before we can start projects, and then we'll close it out with information about the projects or activities that are planned, and then end it off with a slide that gives information on where you can find further details on the rules and regulations around how this program or how this grant is administered, and some informational documents that are pertinent to the city of South Fulton. So again, the Community Development Block Grant program supports community development activities to build stronger and more resilient communities. The process of doing this are implementing activities that may address needs such as infrastructure, economic development projects, public safety, excuse me, public facility installations, community centers, housing, rehabilitation, the list goes on. And that information, again, is available on active links that are in the presentation that should have been made available to all of council and mayor, and will be available to the public when this presentation goes live on the website. We can go to the next slide, please. So the city of South Fulton was awarded in fiscal year 21, $512,225 that have yet to be expended. For fiscal year 22, we were awarded $466,408 that is yet to be expended. And for fiscal year 23, the award letter was just given to us, I believe, in the end of January, beginning of February, with an amount of $474,879. So we have three fiscal years' worth of funding from this grant that we have to work towards expending. As a general rule, there is a regulation that says that we have to meet a timeliness requirement, which means that we have to have a balance no greater than one and one-half times its annual, the annual grant remaining in the line of credit, 60 days prior to the end of the program year, or roughly two months. So we are definitely outside of that, so that is problematic. The next slide, please. So the basic requirements for CDBG is that we have to meet three, what they call national objectives. Those three objectives, when pulling together projects or activities that will utilize CDBG funds, are benefiting low and moderate income persons, preventing or eliminating slum or blight, and meeting other community development needs having a particular urgency because existing conditions pose a serious and immediate threat to the health or welfare of the community and other financial resources not available to meet such needs. Let's go to the next slide. So here is where we come up with a plan, a consolidated plan, which is a overarching plan of how you want to use the funds. On this slide, I provide some information on rules and regulations on what activities or projects are eligible, and there's a breakdown of all of that information provided there. The consolidated plan is pretty much the blueprint that you will follow that will inform the annual action plan. Now, I want to also preface this presentation with this. A lot of this information is not, this, this, this presentation is not heavy on images. I don't have a lot of pictures in here, and this is on purpose. The, the job of working with CDBG is not a bullet and a list of responsibilities for someone, it is actually the, the job. This grant has to be managed by someone who, or someone's persons who are going to be fully dedicated and immersed in CDBG in order for it to, to work the way that it should. So I just want to be clear about that. With the consolidated plan, again, it's the overarching plan on how the city plans to use the funds, and the annual action plan is the consolidated plan broken up annually on projects that will be done on an annual basis with the funds that have been allocated annually. Now, within the annual action plan, the annual action plan actually breaks down the specific projects and activities that will be performed in the low and moderately income census tract areas. So that means that these funds cannot be evenly distributed amongst the districts. It has to be in LMI district tracts. I believe that a community development director who was previously here had provided the city with maps and information on what areas those were, and for the most part, they were districts three, five, six, and seven. Now, within the consolidated action plan and the annual action plan, there is a component of both plans that requires citizen participation. This is important because what we want to do is to make sure that the annual plan and the consolidated plan includes the, the wants and considerations of those who reside in those areas. So the community has to be involved in this process. And feedback from the community, whether it be through surveys, questionnaires, community talk backs, a number of activities that will engage the community, those responses are also supposed to be included in the consolidated plan and the annual action plan. So that is one of the ways in which you'll be able to get approved and be able to draw down funds, is by actually including this information in your annual action plan and your consolidated plan. Otherwise, HUD will not allow for you to access the funds. Next slide, please. Environmental assessment. So any projects that, for the most part, involve any type of land disturbance will require an environmental assessment. Projects that, for instance, code enforcement might implement, even though code enforcement already has an environmental assessment component to their projects, HUD requires that you complete their environmental assessment process. So there are forms that have to be completed, and you must be in compliance with the National Environmental Policy Act, and make sure that those forms are, are completed before the project can commence. So from there, we can go to the next slide, which is IDIS. Now, IDIS is an acronym for the Integrated, excuse me, the Integrated Dispersment and Information System. So basically, it's an online management system where you will enter in your actual projects and activities, and once those projects and activities are entered in, then that will allow for you to be able to draw down the funds for those projects. The annual action plan is also uploaded here, the consolidated plan is also uploaded here, and again, the individual projects are loaded here as well. The IDIS system requires that you have certain people within your department or within the city that are designated to operate within the system. So there is a form that has to be filled out, has to be notarized, there is a process by which you have to go through in order to have access to the system. But once you have access to the system, you can go in and start drawing down funds. Currently, we have staff in finance as well as CDRA and in the city manager's office that has access to the system, and we have two staff members who are currently waiting for final approval through HUD to get their access to the system. Next slide. CAPERS. So CAPERS is another acronym that stands for the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. So the consolidated plan is, again, the strategy, the annual plan, it describes the tactics and how you will get the job done, and then the CAPERS is the final report that wraps everything up. Again, everything is done in IDIS, so when you get to the point where you've completed projects, you've drawn down the money, now you wanna do your CAPERS where you will create a report that will give an overview of the projects and the end results of the completion of those projects. Next slide, please. Projects. So again, the annual action plan for fiscal year 2021 mapped out how the overall funds of $512,225 would be expended, and it was divided up amongst these departments with funding allocations as follows. So you'll see Economic Development had an allocation of $150,000, Parks and Rec $25,000, Public Works $25,000. CDRA, I have them twice because of the Fair Housing programming that would have utilized the $25,000, and then $100,000 was allocated for administrative services. Administrative services can go towards compensating staff who are working on CDBG projects. It can also be used for hiring consultants to come in and help to administer the program and actually do all of the annual action plans, the CAPERS, and can do all of the administrative work. There was $25,000 that was allocated for fire, and then code enforcement $150,000. Next slide, please. The same for fiscal year 2022, with the $466,000 that was allocated. It was broken down by code enforcement, Parks and Rec, and Public Works, CDRA, again. So now we're gonna go into the actual projects themselves. So here I have a big red X going through code enforcement, so there's a reason for this. And the reason why is because there's a thing called supplanting, if you're not familiar with the term, but it occurs when a state or unit of local government reduces state or local funds for an activity, especially because federal funds are available to fund that same activity. Blah, 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 break it down, where the goats, we're gonna put it where the goats can get it. What this basically means is that if your budget is already allocated to do a particular project, so if you have a budget of $200,000 for demolition, and you complete $200,000 worth of demolition work, you are using the funds that you had already planned to do that project. You cannot use CDBG funds to do the $200,000 worth of work because you were already budgeted to do that. Your city already made plans to do that. What we want to do is use CDBG to help supplement projects, not to take place of funding those projects. So this right here shows that even though code enforcement completed these projects, they used the funds from the general fund, the general budget to complete the project. So we can't go back and say, hey, we're gonna reimburse the city because we did these projects. They already had it budgeted, so we would not be able to take So we would not be able to take these completed projects and use them to draw down those funds. Rather, if there are additional projects, demolitions, abatements, things of that nature, that code enforcement needs to complete, and they've depleted their demolition fund, then we can now use CDBG funds to cover the additional projects or activities that could not be covered with the general fund. Next slide.
I just want to note, Ms. Smoot, council seems very engaged, but we, you've gone over the 10 minutes. I think, I think you're okay to go, but I know that you're only about halfway through the presentation.
Yeah, I'm just about done. So what I can do is instead of going through all of the other departments and their funds, I will move to the CDRA section, which is important because, again, as stated before, we have $100,000 in one fiscal year that was dedicated to administrative services. I would submit that we might want to consider looking into getting a consult, consultant to come in and help to, help us to push this, get this money out the door, to get the projects done, service the, the areas that need them, and be able to file our paperwork properly so that we do not further not meet deadlines and then have our funds get a less amount each year because HUD will take the money back or will award you less money the next year if you're not meeting the timeliness schedule.
And I'm sorry, Ms. Smoot, I don't want you to skip through the project list. I think that's the most important part of the presentation. So don't skip through it. I just wanted to, yeah.
Grab it up. I got you. No problem. So, and again, we have not expended any of the funds. So even though I could go through these individual projects and they all sound nice, for instance, we have a facade grant program through economic development that will be administered statewide, excuse me, citywide, that would help with small businesses. Again, the funds, again, have not been expended yet. So these are projects and activities that we want to do, but they have not been done yet. And again, each one of these departments, each one of these project slides indicate a specific, a specific project, but a project that has not been started yet. So if we can go to, I guess it would be slide 24, the one for modifications, so we can go past right there. So this leads me to this here. The consolidated plan and the annual action plan can be amended through a process called the substantial amendment. A substantial amendment means that you can go in and make changes to your consolidated plan or your annual action plan if, for instance, we're faced with a situation like we have now where we're not able to draw, we're not drawing down the funds. Mostly, the reason behind why we're not drawing down the funds is two or threefold. One, capacity. We've had a lot of turnovers. So with that, we've had projects that may have been ready to start, and then for whatever reason, the persons or, or person who may have been on the case is no longer here. Someone else comes in new, and then it's a knowledge gap that has to be filled before the project can start again, and then months have passed before we're able to expend those funds. The second is, again, the projects themselves. We can be very creative in the projects and the types of projects that we choose to, to do. For instance, you can use CDBG funds for Wi-Fi and broadband, specifically in this building, which we know has had substantial issues in that area. We can use Wi-Fi, excuse me, CDBG funds for things like solar power because we have those who are very much interested in living a more green life. We can do solar power projects. But again, those projects were not initially in the consolidated plan. So you can't use the funds for an activity or a project that was not initially in the consolidated plan or the annual action plan. So a modification of that plan would allow for us to be able to include that in the plan. All right? But with that, again, we're up against the clock because you have the timeliness issue. We have to have citizen participation before we can actually proceed with a project. So once you do all of that, you're literally doing it all over again because you want the community to chime in on whether or not this is something that they want. Then HUD has to approve it. Then we'll be able to include that in our plan and then start those projects. So those would be like the three things that are affecting us being able to draw down these funds. A quick Q and A. I actually prepared some questions and some answers, and then I'll open it up for any additional questions and answers. So first question, and I believe that will be the next slide. What are considered ineligible activities? Again, on this slide, I have the regulation that you can click on that gives a more exhaustive list of activities. But of course, you can't use it for political activities. You can't use it to purchase equipment like construction equipment, fire protection, personal property. You can't use CDBG funds for buildings or partitions thereof used for general conduct, conducting of, of government. So we wouldn't be able to use CDBG, CBG funds for working on anything in City Hall. Q and A number two. Next slide. Can I use all of my CDBG funds for slum blight and/or urgent need in a single period? So the answer is no. You can only use up to 30% of funds towards slum or blight. So even if you have projects that you know you can quickly use up the money, there's only a certain percentage that can be used for a single project or a single type of project. So that cannot be done. Moving along. Next question. Can you use CDBG funds to provide relocation services for residents? The answer, no. Not unless the resident is declared displaced. HUD has a definition for displacement, and a displaced person means any person that moves from real property or moves his or her personal property from real property to permanently or involuntarily, to permanent or involuntarily as a direct result of rehabilitation, demolition, or acquisition. So those three things have to be in play before a resident can be displaced or relocated using CDBG funds. The project has to be of rehabilitation purposes, demolition, or acquisition. So if it is not those three things, you cannot use CDBG funds to relocate residents, no matter how many roaches, how many rats they may have in their place, you cannot use those, these funds for that purpose. Okay? Two more questions. What is considered a conflict of interest? Self-explanatory. Of course, again, you can't use it for personal purposes. You cannot use it to assist with activities that you have any type of ability to make decisions on. So if you are an elected official, you cannot use CDBG funds for any personal benefit. Again, the regulation is included in that slide. And one last question. My department, my department has a program that would be administered in an LMI census tract. Can CDBG funds be used to help with that program? Sure. An answer, yes, but only if the program, again, is an activity articulated in the consolidated plan and annual action plan. For example, we have a program called PALS, the Police Athletically. Police Athletically could use CDBG funds, especially if these are programs or projects that are being done in, let's say, Welcome Mall or Burdette that are located in LMI census tracts. However, the program was not initially in the annual action plan. This is where you would do an amendment to the plan that would allow for programming, and then we can start using those funds towards programming such as PALS. So there are ways in which we can creatively utilize these funds, but we would definitely have to make some adjustments and amendments to the annual action plan and consolidated plan in order to be able to, to do that. And lastly, I'll say this again, if we can get a consultant to help us with these funds, that's one way that the funds can be drawn down because you can use administrative funds through CDBG to pay for a consultant to assist with this. You don't have to use general funds out of, out of the general budget. Any questions?
See you in the queue. Councilman Sebastian, the chair recognizes you.
Thank you, sir.
Corner information, Mayor. Can you tell, can you read who's in the queue because we can't see it through?
Thank you. Ms. Smoot, thank you for your presentation. I saw your list of questions at the end, and in speaking, you actually made some suggestions. So I would really love to see you follow up with a list of recommendations.
Yes, sir.
Because most of this is, is telling us what not to do. You know, so you did tell us what to do. Okay? The other thing is, while I would love to have the money, on a couple of these slides says District Four for Creel Park, I think that's District Five, I believe, right?
Six.
Oh, six? District six. So we could change the name. I could give you a park if you want, but it's actually District Six. And actually, City Grove Park is, is in District Four. Okay? Not six. But we could always switch the money. It's okay if you would approve that. All right? But thank you. But that list of recommendation process would be nice. All right.
Mayor Pro Tim Williams Brown. Do we want to refresh this? Here, I'm going to clear this out. Everybody get back in the queue again if you want to get in the queue. Okay. So, yeah, while, while we're, I'll just go by hands. I'm going to go around. It's not, I, I do have to just make this announcement. I have been getting several complaints throughout the evening about sound and glitching video. So whether or not we get Wi-Fi for this building in the CDBG, we, we, we just, we gotta get this fixed. Every month, this is a problem, and it's, we've been here, we've been meeting here like a year now, so. Dr. Rowe.
Quick question. I know at one point, code had a pretty extensive list of properties that needed to be demolished that far exceeded what we had allocated. Do the lists of the remaining properties not fall in those census tracts so that you could draw the funds down?
Yes. So some of those, of those properties are in the LMI census tracts, and we can use CDBG funds.
Okay. So I, I do like Councilman Sebastian's recommendation. After we look at what's on our list to make sure the things we originally proposed, if we can't move forward, I get it. But if it is, like I said, I remember like two pages worth of properties that need to be demolished and $200,000, clearly it exceeded that amount. So that would be the only thing that I would ask, that we look at that list and make sure that they are not expenditures beyond what was allocated from the general fund.
Thank you, Dr. Rowe. And, and just remember, we can only go up to 30% of the fund can be spent on slum blight.
Oh, I'm clear.
Well, I'm just going to go around. Councilwoman Gums, do you have anything? Councilwoman Willis, you're next.
My computer's working fine in the queue, so I always go in it just to let you know, I want to thank you, Mrs. Smoot, and Mr. Don Toms for bringing this comprehensive and transparent presentation. And as you know, I sat in the meeting with you when this city was sent a letter, and none of us on the city council was notified that our CBD, our CB, our community block development grants were in jeopardy because we weren't spending the money. Some of us, specifically Councilmember Williams and myself, was accused of lying and exaggerating the truth. But you just gave confirmation to everything that we reported a couple of months ago. And what the HUD official said, because I sat in that meeting, is that if we do not spend this money, we won't lose it, but we will not, we will lose allocation. And it makes no sense when we have three parks that are in less developed census tracts, Welcome Mall, Creel, and Burdette. And when I can go outside and see our sheds crumbling and falling apart and, and picnic benches falling apart, and then when you go to Creel Park, you know, they have a lot of things that need to be done to Creel Park. When you go to Burdette, there are a lot of things that need to be done in Burdette. And the number one things that people complain about is making sure we have better parks and services. And a lot of stuff hasn't been budgeted. This money can be spent. Wi-Fi, we're supposed to get a new workout room by June, and the Wi-Fi in this building is, is, is horrible. So spending this money is not a problem. Getting community input is not a problem. I can pack a room. We just got to get it done. And I'm not blaming you. What also came out in that meeting is that there were five different contacts from the point that we got our award. Five different people. And then for a whole year, nobody touched this grant. Nobody. And I'm going to say that's not our job as city council to be in the middle of operations. We were told we got CBDG grants. We were given a plan. We approved the plan, and then it's on staff to execute. And what has happened here is that no execution happened. And this predates you, Ms. Smoot. You just gathered all the information, and you're just letting us know and giving us confirmation what Councilmember Williams and I said a couple of months ago. We got over $1 million at state. Over $1 million. And that's a lot of money that we can use. And then we weren't told. Nobody told us that we were in this position. We found a letter by happenstance. Somebody slid stuff under our door. And then I called HUD, and HUD invited me to a meeting at City Hall to put us on notice that we were in jeopardy of losing our, our community block development grants. So no, Councilmember Williams and I, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tim Williams Brown and I, we never lied. We told the truth because we believe in transparency. So what I would like to see from here is recommendations. And if you need our help, if you got three of us, you know, and that have parks in less developed census tracts, let's get with the park directly. Let's get with the city manager. We have some properties in all, in, in, in our districts that need to be demolished. And I own, I know we can only go up to 30%, but we still have some. Because what was said is that if we don't have a balance of less than $500,000 by November, then next year, we may not receive allocation. And I yield to that, Ms., I mean, Mayor Pro Tim Williams Brown, but I knew this, and I said this, and I reported this, and I want to thank you, Ms. Smoot, so much for giving confirmation to what we said a couple of months ago.
Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Ms. Smoot, to sort of add to what my colleague said, along with the recommendation, I would love to see staff come up with a list of projects and tell us if there are issues with staff. There's funding in here, as you mentioned, administrative funding. So I heard you mentioned the, the consultant, but just give us something that we can look at, you know? Recommendations. This is what you can do. This is the staff that we need, right? And if there's any action for us to take, we are more than happy to take it. All we, all we need has been said even with the Public Works report, is for us to be able to communicate very clearly out to the public on, on these issues. Because, you know, when this whole CDBG thing blew up a few years ago... Because, you know, when this whole CDBG thing blew up a few years ago, you know, that's partly the reason why Fulton County wanted to give the monies back, right? Because they didn't want to do all this work of managing this thing. But it sounds as if, to your credit, that you understand the whole thing and the system base and how you explain the flow of projects and the whole granting utilization and reporting back should be used. So I would really love for... to see you and the rest of the staff, Mr. City Manager, build on that knowledge and expertise and get this thing back under control for us. Because I think, it sounds as if you guys are right there. You just need to execute the projects. That's what it sounds like to me. Thank you.
Councilman Reeves.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for recognizing me. Thank you, Ms. Smoot, for your report. Mr. Adams, before I ask her, did we receive a written document? The written report for what she just presented?
Yes, sir. It was actually in the agenda package.
Okay, because I missed it. I overlooked it. Okay, cool. I just overlooked it. And so, and I get that... I get that out. And so, also too, is... Is there anybody, anyone, or any department certified in handling CBDG funds or implementing projects?
So we do have a grants manager, Ms. Antoinette Williams, who handles grants for the city. I would also like to, if I may, thank Councilwoman Rao because it was at the... closer to the beginning of the year where she sent an email out to the city manager giving us the dates for training for CDBG. And it was because of that that I was able to get the training and get the CDBG basics certification. So thank you, Councilwoman Rao, for encouraging us to get the training that was necessary. So we do have a number of staff members who have gone through the CDBG training. Some have gone further and taken the exam and got the certification. But we do have a number of staff members who are... have the training from CDBG. So between the staffing with the training, those who have the certificate, myself, I believe Ms. Antoinette Williams has the certificate as well. And also, she's the grants manager. That's who we have at our disposal to assist with CDBG. But of course, a consultant who specializes in this would definitely be helpful.
Mayor...
Right. Okay. You said that further that... I'm sorry, my phone rang. And so, is further that, as you said, there's some who went on to receive the advance and received the certification?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, sir?
You said that some... You did the class. And thank you, Councilwoman Rao. We appreciate that. As a suggestion you made to them, but you said y'all was able to get people trained. But you said then there was an advanced certification that they was actually able to go get certified.
Right. So you can take the class and then...
Who are they?
So myself, Ms. Antoinette Williams, who's also the city's grant manager. And I'm not sure who else may have completed the actual training.
Okay. Alright, fair enough. And... But when it comes to the CBDG funds, they're using 30% of that to demolish homes. Mr. Toms, am I correct? Wouldn't that be under the blighted house fund? And I said, as they said, that there was not enough money. But doesn't the blighted house, isn't that supposed to be getting funded $200,000 per year, each year? I mean, the way I read the orders is, I don't know, because I don't know if we need to use CBDG funds. If we fund that correctly, we would have enough money to do the demolition of the homes that need to be demolished. And let CBDG be for CBDG and other usage. Like increasing the parks, like my colleague, Councilwoman Willis said, in those three... in the census tracts and the parks that's underdeveloped.
Yes. Yes, that is correct. We allocate an annual amount for blight. And once that money is expended, any blight removal beyond that dollar amount would not be supplanted and could be used towards CDBG.
So it's interchangeable. Okay. Alright. Well, thank you for that explanation, Senator. Appreciate it. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome, sir.
Mayor Pro Tim Williams Brown. Councilwoman Pritchett. Alright, thank you. We are about 15 minutes behind schedule, but this is the earliest we've gotten to our zoning hearing in months. What is... what is the proper procedure? May... I'm sorry, there are a lot of people talking out of turn, so I'm getting confused. Attorney McLendon, what is the proper procedure to suspend this meeting so that we can go to our 6 o'clock scheduled zoning public hearing?
Let me just recess the meeting. Mr. Chair.
Alright. I will entertain a motion for recess. You will notice that the timing of the sheet, the presentation's part two, start at 7 o'clock. Because 45 days prior to this, we advertised that we would have this zoning hearing. It shouldn't only take a few minutes because all of the cases have been withdrawn. Is that correct, Attorney McLendon? But pro forma, we still have to go through this process of just hearing and dismissing the cases.
Mayor. Point of information...
The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Willis.
Are you asking if that's the will of the council? Because just because we advertised it 45 days ago that we would start a certain time for the zoning hearing, it doesn't mean that we can't run over and we can't start. So I'm asking the city attorney, are we in violation if we decide to continue on with the work session? Or is it the will of this council if we want to recess and go ahead and start the zoning hearing? We can do that.
It is the will of the council. However, I will advise that you do want to start your meetings as closely as possible to the advertised time.
Okay.
And I will just note one more time that we, every month, have had this issue where we're starting 30 minutes to an hour or more late. So if we need to move up the work session an hour, if we need to shorten the number of topics, we never complete a work session on time. So, I mean, that's why I put these times on the chart. We could have amended the meeting before the beginning. It's just... It's clearly an issue that we need to address. Dr. Rao.
I move that we suspend the work session meeting and convene... Can I say it at the same time? And convene the public zoning... Okay. I recess the work session.
It's been properly moved and seconded by a show of hands.
Record that as 5 to 0.
Alright. Mr. Reeves, are you there? We wanted to get his vote if he was there. Alright. And I will entertain a motion to... I'm sorry, we don't need to do that. Let us call... I think that's a yes.
Thank you.
Alright. I'm going to call to order the zoning hearing. Mr. Clerk, please sound the roll.
Work session was recessed at 6:19 PM by a vote of 6 to 0. This is the roll call for the alcohol zoning public hearing scheduled for 6 o'clock. The Honorable Catherine F. Rao, District 1.
Present.
The Honorable Carmelita Gums, District 2.
Present.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District 3.
Present.
The Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District 4. The Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District 5.
The Honorable Ford.
The Honorable Natasha Williams Brown, District 6. The Honorable Linda B. Pritchett, District 7. And lastly, the Honorable Mayor Colley.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
Alright. Please sound the first item.
First item, item 1 under number 3. It's U-23-001. It's a public hearing, application by Jim Warren for a special use permit for a church or other facility for religious organizations to worship at 2601 Flat Shores Road. The property is owned R4 and AG1. This is located in District 6, and staff and planning commission's recommendation is deferral.
Attorney McLendon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep my seat unless you would like me to. Thank you. This is case U-23-001. It is a request for a special use permit for a church at 2601 Flat Shores Road. I do need to amend the recommendation. I think we have these backwards, and that's my fault. This application has actually been withdrawn by the applicant. I will advise council that this matter will come back before you in the form of a proposed ordinance to grant a special use permit as well as a rezoning for this particular parcel. There was some incorrect information that had been given out in the past about what the actual zoning designation is at this parcel and whether or not it was eligible for a special use permit. But this was an existing facility that was used for a church in the past. And this congregation is just trying to move in and renovate that building. But for today, this applicant has withdrawn this application. My recommendation is that the council accept that withdrawal.
Alright. So we're not voting today. Is that correct? This is just a...
You can vote to accept the withdrawal. Our code actually requires that if a case has already been advertised, that the council has to move to accept any withdrawal from the applicant.
Alright. Thank you for that. I will entertain a motion for withdrawal.
I'd like to make a motion to...
Accept withdrawal.
Accept the request for withdrawal for number U-23-001.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Let us take a vote by show of hands. And a voice vote for Mr. Reeves. Or you can raise your hand on the Zoom if Councilman... I'm sorry, if Clerk Adams... Can you see his hand raised on the Zoom or chat?
Not yet, no. There we go. That was unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next case is U-23-002. It's a public hearing, application by Dominique Nar, a special use permit for a personal care home at 4530 Janus Drive. The property is owned R6, and it's located in District 5. The request is to withdraw or request is to withdraw by the applicant.
Alright.
I move that we...
Wait, wait. Attorney McLendon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This case, case U-23-002, has been withdrawn by the applicant.
Alright. I will entertain a motion to accept the withdrawal.
I move that we accept the withdrawal by the applicant for case U-23-002 for a personal care home.
Alright. It's been properly moved and seconded. I will take a vote by show of hands.
Councilman Sebastian, did you want to vote on that item? Okay. I record that as unanimous. Councilman Reeves' hand is raised as well.
Alright. Mr. Clerk, please sound the last item.
Last item is Z-23-003, application by Serenity Estates LLC for a rezoning property for AG1 to CUP at 4073 West Stubbs Road to build 40 single-family dwelling detached homes on 11.4 acres of land. It's located in District 4. And, Ms. McLendon, is this being withdrawn as well? This one is... A request for deferral is requested.
Alright. Attorney McLendon, do we have a date for the deferral?
Yes. This case will be heard at the... It's going to be re-advertised. As currently, the request was from AG1 to CUP. It's going to be re-advertised as a request to go from AG1 to NUP, Neighborhood Use Plan. And that case will be heard at the April Planning Commission meeting and will come back before council in May.
Alright. I will entertain a motion to accept the deferral.
So may I move that we accept the deferral for case Z-23-003 by Serenity Estates?
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Alright. I will... Let's take this vote by a show of hands.
I record that as unanimous.
Alright. We are... We are back on schedule. I will... I will just ask, is there a consensus among the council while we're all here together to have our zoning meeting for May, which will be our last zoning meeting before the break? To have that zoning hearing on May the 9th start at 7:00 PM? As opposed to 6:00 PM? The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Willis.
I really think if we can stay on Jermaine... Stay on topic and talk about things Jermaine to the agenda, that would alleviate a lot of lost time as well. For example, we talked about why is Public Works... Or giving us a plan for Public Works to come in-house, that wasn't Jermaine to the agenda. That wasn't on the agenda. He was presenting what was on the agenda. And so I just think if we try to stick to things that are on the... That's on the agenda. Because that was a whole... If you go back and time it, that was a whole 15-minute discussion.
I hear you, Councilwoman Willis. Notwithstanding that tonight, it is the case that we never start on time. So that, you know, we've had these conversations about humanity and brevity. But somehow, every meeting for the past three months, we've ended at midnight. And... Or later, or 1 o'clock. And every zoning hearing, I have the floor, and every zoning hearing, we started late. So rather than debate the events of one particular meeting, I would like to look at the pattern in total. And if there is no one who would like to make that motion, we can move on and stay on.
Well, Mayor, I didn't yield.
We can...
You just started talking, and I didn't yield.
And stay on schedule. So, Councilwoman Willis, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Yes, I did not yield. I also think that... Didn't we advertise this? Haven't we advertised these dates and times?
We have not advertised yet for the next round of hearings. However, we have sent off the language for the advertisement. It does say 6 o'clock, just for the council's information. We have to send the daily report, our advertisement, five days prior to when they will run it. So it's really a long window of time between when we need to know when the meetings are going to be held and so that we can advertise them very far in advance. So we've already sent in the language for the Planning Commission meeting and the next city council public hearing, as well as the next city council meeting in May.
So Mayor, you asked for everyone's consensus. So my consensus, being that we have already sent information out, is that we keep it at 6:00 and then maybe make an assessment... Make a reassessment when we have to, you know, make a reassessment of this and try to stick to the things that are Jermaine to the topic. Now, if it's the will of the council to do something different, even though we've advertised information that is going to be at 6:00, I mean, it's the will of the council. But I... If since we've already advertised it, my consensus would be to leave it alone and let us try to stick to what's Jermaine on the agenda.
Are you finished, Councilwoman Willis?
I yield.
Thank you. So, Mr. McLendon, you said that you sent the information in, but the advertisement has not gone out.
That's correct.
Okay. Dr. Rao.
I would say I appreciate the break in the agenda. It made sense. I do think we should keep to our meeting times. And I think if we are moving in that direction, why don't we consider looking, if it's the will of the council, to do that with the next fiscal year? Because that's just a few months away.
All right. I'm sorry, Councilman Sebastian?
Thank you, sir. Yeah, we have given, I've been on a thread where we get some information for those meetings down to the end of May and I would hate to have to go back to the folks and try and scramble and change them now. Also, I, we started this discussion about meetings at one of the council retreats in twenty twenty-two. I would love to see us come back after the break and I don't know if it will align as Councilmember Ral said for the next fiscal year, but certainly, you know, we should work this out in a retreat type setting. That's my, my opinion and we can look at all our meetings and come back hopefully as we go into the fall with a, with a better plan. Because I do agree with you, we don't ever start on six, at six, and so I think realigning it is, is in order. We just have to figure out when to do it and how.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions, comments? All right, thank you so much. I do do my best to predict how long these things will take and we are exactly on time at six-thirty. So I am going to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting, this zoning hearing, and then we're going to head to our six-thirty special call meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, it's properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's do a show of hands.
I record that as unanimous. We are adjourned at six-thirty-one P M.
All right, thank you. I will call to order the special call meeting for six-thirty. Mr. Clerk, please sound the roll.
It's the roll call for the special call meeting. The Honorable Catherine F. Ral, District One.
Present.
The Honorable Carmen Lita Gums, District Two.
Present.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three. The Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District Four.
Present.
The Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five.
You tell him to four.
The Honorable Natasha Williams Brown, District Six. And the Honorable Lynda B. Pritchett, District Seven. And the Honorable Mayor Khalid.
Present.
So Mayor, you have a call.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the first item.
First item is request council approval of a special event permit for Kendall Rae's Greenheart City of South Fulton Presents Dare to Care Earth Day Parade and Fair. This is to be held on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. This is C D R A.
All right, and I do just want to note that the incredible Kendall Rae and her parents are present. Thank you for being here this evening. Mr. McClendon, Attorney McClendon?
This is a request to approve a special event permit. C D R A recommends approval.
I move that we approve the special use permit for Kendall Rae's Greenheart City of South Fulton Dare to Care Earth Day Parade and Fair.
Okay, and the, the motion has been entertained and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Clerk, let's do a vote by show of hands.
I record that as unanimous.
All right, thank you. All right, and please sound the next item.
Next item is the first read of an ordinance to amend section sixteen dash twenty fifteen, eligibility for license of Title sixteen alcoholic beverages of the City of South Fulton Code of Ordinance related to eligibility of alcohol applicants to amend section sixteen dash twenty twenty-one denial application and for other lawful purposes. This is sponsored by council members Willis and Ral and this is the first read.
All right, is there any discussion on this first read, Councilwoman Willis or Ral? All right, seeing and hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will take a show of hands.
I record that as unanimous. We are adjourned at six-thirty-four P M.
All right, we are ahead of schedule. If anyone would, I'll entertain a motion if anyone would like to take a brief recess or we can just power through this part two of the presentations.
Can we just power through? Because I know we have to do an executive session.
All right. I will entertain a motion to, do we need a motion? I'll just bring it back from recess.
Motion to reconvene?
Yes, I'll entertain a motion to reconvene.
I move that we reconvene the work session.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
We had a carry to vote, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I record that as unanimous. We are reconvene at six-thirty-five P M for the work session.
All right, is, yes, bottom line concepts, if you will, if you will come forward. As you all know, it is tax season and April fifteenth, Saturday, is tax day amongst many other exciting events. So before you come to our exciting events, make sure you file your taxes. However, there are tens of thousands of dollars available for local small businesses. We wanted to make sure that you all were aware of this. It does not expire on the fifteenth and for your edification and we will bring you some good news now about tax benefits that may be available to your small business here in the city. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Willis?
I just want you to make that correction. Tax day is on the eighteenth of this year.
Okay, thank you. Tax day is on the eighteenth, so you can come to all the events and, and file by the eighteenth. Thank you for that.
Good afternoon. Thank you for inviting us to be here today. My name is Brenda Scott and I have a team with me and we're going to share with you details about the E R C program, which stands for the Employee Retention Tax Credit Program, better known as E R C. And I'd like to introduce to you Ms. Sylvie Trullier. She's a resident of South Fulton.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a resident of Renaissance at South Park.
Our next person is Ms. Eleanor Watson. She's also a member of our team and a resident of South Fulton for how many years? And tell them where you live.
Thirty years. I'm off of Wexford Road, but I'm from Stonewall Tower and I've been with everybody.
Thank you. Our presenter this evening is Mr. Reginald Ganey and he will share with you details about what the E R C program is, how it operates, who can take advantage of it, what the benefits of the program will be to the residents, the business owners, as well as to the various businesses within the districts. And as we've been listening throughout this meeting, we see that the council members are very concerned about the constituents in their districts. So we hope to share with you information that will give you a greater understanding of what the E R C is and how it can benefit your constituents. Thank you. Mr. Reginald Ganey.
Hello, council members and residents of South Fulton community. We're here to just give you some updates on the E R C programs and let you know about some of the amendments that were made to the program for the business community within the city. First of all, just a quick overview, the E R C is a stimulus program. It was designed to help the businesses that were able to retain their employees during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. It was established in Indicars Act. It is a refundable tax credit that your businesses could claim. It is not, I repeat, it is not a loan. E R C is based on qualified wages and healthcare and that was paid to the employees. There are significant returns. For example, they can receive a maximum of the twenty-six thousand dollars per employee. So if the businesses took PPP one and two, the Payroll Protection Program, if the businesses took both rounds of the PPP, they're eligible to receive between six and ten thousand per employee, per W two employee. If that business only took one round of the PPP, then they can be eligible to receive between ten and fifteen thousand per W two employee. For the businesses that didn't take any PPP money, they could be eligible to receive between fifteen and twenty-six thousand per W two employee. So we see that very substantial number that can help businesses keep their doors open. They can reinvest that money within the company. They allows them to hire more people, right? Get more resources and in turn help the community and the city. Multiple years of that's available is twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. A lot of people ask about twenty twenty-two. Unfortunately, twenty twenty-two is not a part of the program, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Many ways to qualify. You can qualify for decrease or increase revenue. That's one of the amendments that were made to the program or if they have partial or even full shutdowns. Next slide. So how do you know if your business is eligible? Even if a business did not have a revenue reduction or if it was not deemed essential, then they can still qualify for this E R C program. For example, they had a change in their business hours, they have partial or full suspension of your operation, they had shutdowns of their supply chain. Remember hearing a lot on the news about, you know, everybody having supply chain issues. They had a reduction in their services that was offered, right? Reduction in the workforce with employees. If the business had a disruption in one particular part or division of their company, then they can still apply. There's an inability to visit the client's job site, suppliers weren't unable to make their deliveries and crucial goods and materials, additional spacing requirements, right, for social distance, we all remember the six feet. There was a change in the job roles, the tasks and the functions that they couldn't do from home or remote, right? All these issues will help, all these qualifications and issues will help a business still qualify for their E R C program. So there were many, like I say, amendments made from the initial onset of the program. A lot of businesses don't know about these amendments. So I want to reason, want to bring it to the council, let you know for the business community in, within the city of South Fulton, that maybe in twenty twenty where they didn't qualify, now that they, now they, they do qualify because of the amendments that were made. How does this process work? Our role is to identify the prospective clients, share with them the E R C opportunity, schedule a call, make an appointment and get them with a manager to let them know how much money that they can receive back for their business and that's going to start their E R C journey. Next slide. Let's go to the next slide. This is most relevant, relevant issue, industries. Some most relevant industries, and we say relevant because these are some of the industries that have the most common in receiving their refunds, right? But all industries, all businesses are eligible. So for example, bars, car washes, contracted construction companies, dry cleaners, these are all some of the ones that was hardest hit, food and beverage wholesalers, electricians, franchisees, cannabis industry, gyms, healthcare providers, hotels, moving companies, restaurants, retailing, senior living room retirement communities, sports facilities are just some, right? Of the different industries and all of these industries are within the city and the community of South Fulton. Some examples of client E R C refunds. In the retail industry, we had a client that received a little over a million dollars. Had another client in the manufacturing industry, received nearly three million dollars. Had a restaurant owner that received almost two million dollars. These are actual clients, but they're forced, their personal information has been left off. Are there any questions that you have for us?
Mayor Pro Tim Williams Brown? Go ahead.
Okay, so, um, thank you. Is it on? It's on. So first of all, thank you for the presentation. How is this relevant to the, to us, is the city council and the government?
The city council?
Yes, how is, how is this relevant to us?
Because as, as I said, most of the business industry community doesn't even know about these amendments that were made, right? So there are many companies within your city that these funds are right there, they don't know anything about, right? We're bringing this information to you so that you can get the word out, right, to the businesses within your city to let them know, hey, you guys can go and file, get this money, put this money back in the community, back in your businesses, be able, you know, then hire more people, right? Or maybe even keep, you know, some of the staff that they got, right? Which in turn puts money back into the city.
So, okay, so that leads me to the question of, why would you come to the city council to ask us to send the information out to the businesses instead of just going to the businesses yourself?
We are going to the businesses ourselves, right? We talked to the mayor, the mayor asked us to come to the city council to let everyone know as, as a whole, what's there, what's available, right? And then you in turn, right? Because you can reach people we, we can't reach, frankly. We don't have access to all the business community within the city of South Fulton, right? We can look them up, we're going, what, daily, right? But you have greater access to them to let them know, hey, this is what's available to you. And as we said, most of them don't know. The government says there's over six million businesses that qualify, right? It's only a fraction of those that have already received their money. Most businesses, companies that we go to, they say they didn't know anything about it. They, they, they remember some from twenty twenty and that's it. They didn't know about the amendments, they didn't know about the changes. Under President Trump, you could only get one forty of PPP or E R C. Under new administration of President Biden, you can get both. So now they can go back and claim it. Most businesses are not aware. So we're bringing it to you to help get the word out, right? Put in the claim.
All right, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you for your presentation. So we're less than a week out before tax returns are due and I, I think that next year, if we could get this information a little bit earlier and then we can connect you with our economic development director who works with most of the businesses in the city of South Fulton and also probably get you all to do some workshops with O-Narrow, the O-National Merchants Association, the Chamber, the South Fulton Chamber of Commerce, because that's where most of our businesses are pretty much, and work closer with our economic development director. Because it's going to be hard for us to get any information out within six days to the businesses within our district and I think this is valuable information for the businesses. But here at the city council meeting, I might, they might, it may not be the best way to get the information out. So if you all, we have your presentation or if you all can get us like a one pager of the, of the different credits and then we can just probably try to disseminate it as best we can. But next year, if we, if you could connect, Mr. Artie, Artie Jones is here. He's our economic development director and he has the Main Street programs under him, the O-National Main Street program and the Red Oak Main Street program. And also he can get you connected with the South Fulton Chamber and then the O-National Merchants Association, because that's where most of the small businesses are located. But thank you for your presentation and if you can get that one pager to us, we'll do our best to get it out. But I don't know if, if, you know, we're going to be able to make such, a much of an impact, because it's only like six days away from the tax deadline.
It's not, it's not dependent on the eighteenth of this year tax deadline.
Okay.
Doesn't have anything to do with that.
Okay, well, that's probably who you all need to work with, Artie Jones. Okay, thank you. All right, all right. You're welcome.
We thank you all very much for your time and for your attention and our main focus and goal here was just to educate you and bring you up to speed on what the Employee Retention Credit Program is. There have been major changes since it was first implemented. There have been major changes since it was first implemented. And many people, even professional accountants, tax preparers, they are still under the old assumption that many businesses don't qualify because maybe they had an increase in revenue as opposed to a decrease. So there are many changes, as Reginald said, that have been made to this. And our goal is just to enlighten you and bring you up to date on what's going on. And we certainly thank you for referring us to the Economic Development Director. And thank you for your time.
Well, we, we got a couple of more comments. Go ahead, uh, Councilman Sebastian.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for your, uh, presentation. I don't know if I missed this in your list, but are religious, um, organizations included in this?
Yes, sir, nonprofits, churches. And we're focusing on small businesses that have between five and five hundred W two employees. However, there are many businesses that have thousands of employees and they still qualify. They just have different parameters, but they still qualify. So we're open to work with nonprofits, churches, small businesses, as well as large businesses.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
No, I, I do just want to say thank you for making that presentation. Uh, you did point out that this, this does not expire anytime soon. And so, uh, I think that many of us will include this in our newsletters and maybe even have some, uh, town halls so that our local businesses can take advantage of these, this money and make sure that it's not left on the table.
Yeah, absolutely, and thank you all so much. And the deadline for filing for 2020 is April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. The deadline for filing for 2021 is April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. But we don't want to leave four hundred and fifty billion dollars on the table. And we're here working together to really get the word out and to help businesses qualify for this money. So thank you, and we work with them from start to finish, from the very initial contact until they receive their check from the IRS. So thank you all so much.
Awesome, thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is item six, Bureau of Cultural Affairs Operations Plan, which will be presented by Ms. Solandia Avini.
Looking lovely in your post Easter white.
Good afternoon, Councilor, Mayor. It's a lot better. How is everyone doing this evening?
Good.
How good, how are you?
I'm great. I'm going to get through this as quickly as possible because I know there's a lot to cover. Um, can everyone see the screen okay?
More or less.
Okay, so cultural affairs in the city of South Fulton. Cultural affairs now consists of one facility in the city of South Fulton, which is the Southwest Arts Center. Next slide, please. Our vision is to become the best and the most well-known provider of arts education and cultural activities in the nation. Our mission is to produce and present high-quality arts education and cultural activities and events to residents who may not otherwise have access to this, to activities of this type and to make culturally enriching opportunities available to all citizens. Our goals and objectives, if you do not know and are not familiar with cultural affairs, we, um, our programs employ and collaborate with top-producing artists, maintain existing successful partnerships, improve existing employee skills and provide excellent customer service to all citizens. Goals and objectives for the facility, to bring the facilities back to post, one-year post-construction condition, which we are currently working on, and to upgrade our theatrical operating systems for the performance theater, which we are also currently working on. Our marketing goals, to increase the Arts Center visibility, which we have done on the city's website, increase our email marketing campaigns, um, and increase our social media marketing. And we have increased our social media campaigns and email marketing campaigns by adding to our ever-growing constant contact list. The history of the Southwest Arts Center opened in June of two thousand and one. This facility was the first of its kind located in the city of South Fulton and its sole purpose is delivering arts to the community. In two thousand and nine, the Performance Theater opened to sold-out audiences of the first performance of Miss Everett's Boys by True Colors Theater Company. And if anywhere of you were around at that time, I'm sure that you remember how amazing that production was. In January eighth, I'm sorry, January eighth, twenty twenty, the city of South Fulton acquired Southwest Arts Center and South Fulton Arts Centers. Next slide, please. Programming for Southwest Arts Center includes classes. We offer three class sessions per year, fall, winter and spring. And our summer programming consists of our Summer Youth Arts Camp as well as our Summer Teen Arts Intensive for ages thirteen to eighteen. And this is for students who are serious about pursuing careers in the arts. We also have theatrical productions at the Arts Center and we host a multitude of professional productions, dance concerts, musical concerts, film screenings, award ceremonies, pageants, graduations, festivals, you name it, we probably do it. We also host visual art exhibitions at the Southwest Arts Center. Southwest Arts Center presents a minimum of twelve professional amateur and student visual art exhibitions. Exhibitions are presented in both our studio building, which is the main building when you drive onto campus, and in our fine art gallery, which is located in the Performance Theater. And mediums include, but not limited to, paintings, sculptures, textiles and performance installations. A couple of statistics, um, pre-COVID programming in twenty twenty, we were booming. However, COVID happened and you can see by the numbers how it impacted our programming. Next slide, please. So during COVID, we had to pivot. So we moved into virtual programming and we offered virtual classes, dance classes, total body fitness, workshops, hand building pottery, group guitar and visual art exhibitions. We also had some live events, um, that were socially distanced and they were outside. Those event, events included Wind Down Wednesdays, which were live shows, hip-hop roundtables, which were live shows streamed, um, via the internet, weekly game shows that included staff and citizens, the Juneteenth Virtual Concert and outdoor concerts in our virtual holiday extravaganza. So in twenty twenty-one, our statistics started to pick up again, however, they were slow. As you can see, we had virtual events, classes, elections came back. We did the South Fulton Graduations at, um, Wolf Creek Amphitheater. We had two art camp sessions. Uh, we presented the end-of-week art camp productions that were of course socially distanced. We presented eight exhibitions and sixty in-person events. And you can see by the numbers that they were not what they were pre-COVID, but we started to come back up. So far in twenty twenty-two, our numbers are beginning to return to pre-COVID conditions. However, we're just in April, so we'll see what happens at the end of the year. But prediction, we see an increase in attendance for all of our programming. Next slide, please. Some of our strategic partners. As you can see, we have a very robust list. We try to work with all the arts organizations in the city and in, um, surrounding communities. Our probably best-producing strategic partner is Kenny Leon's True Colors Theater Company. They have been the resident theater company for Southwest Arts Center since two thousand and nine, since we opened. And now some areas of need for Southwest Arts Center. Uh, because when we were acquired by the city of South Fulton, we had some things that needed to be addressed and had not been by Fulton County as of that time. So right now, we're looking to replace the, replace the stage floor on the main stage. The HVAC replacement, which is currently being worked on. I'm not sure all of you know, but the air is currently out at Southwest Arts Center. So for the next meeting, you might be a little warm. There is a temporary, um, chill, well, no, there's a temporary solution, but we are awaiting our chiller, which I think will be arriving in June. Sometime in June. But depending on what the weather is outside, it might be a little warm and humid. We're looking to get a portable sprung floor in the dance studio. We're also looking to get the water fountains replaced, either replaced or some other solution for the water fountains. Right now, we have a visual art piece installed in front of them and we want to make sure our citizens that come to the theater have an option so they don't have to purchase water. We always need staffing. We're in the process now of hiring two part-time staff members, but with the amount of programming and events that we do, we can always use, use more staffing. It is a dream to have another building on campus. We have outgrown our current facilities and we would like to expand. We do have land on that campus that we can expand on. So that would be a dream of ours to expand to another rehearsal space on that campus. And the other area of need is our marquee. Our marquee that sits in front of the theater has been inoperable for a while and we would like for that to be repaired. So those are the areas of need for Southwest Arts Center. Um, any questions so far?
All right, uh, I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna start with the queue and I see Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. I live all the way out in District Four and I would love to support more things at the Arts Center. It takes me almost, I would say, a good thirty, thirty-five minutes to get up there. But sometimes I don't, as a council member, I should know more about what is happening there, but I don't. So I'm not sure how you distribute the information, but I would love to get the direct, um, distribution of what's coming up there so I can not only promote it, but support it.
Absolutely. We have a constant contact list, we can put you on, add you to. Um, you can also follow us on Instagram and Facebook at South Fulton P R C A.
Let's start with the, um, the newsletter. Uh, if you need one of my cards, I can give it to you afterwards, okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you, that's all I got.
Thank you, Councilman Sebastian. Councilman Willis.
Thank you, um, for all that you do for arts and culture. A couple of things. For the, um, communication of when, when you, what programs you have and what events you have, I would like to see that posted online. And, I mean, I know you have constant contact and Instagram, but we really need to run this information. It seems like our communication is not flowing up to our communicate, our public affairs director. And it should be centralized so that we can direct people where to go and they know what programs we have and they know what productions we have. And it will probably help with this ticket sales as well. So I would just like to see that improved and we kind of have, we sync up with our communication. Now, I mean, I, and I can't help myself. I saw the list of all of these strategic partners and what I do see missing out of this presentation is how much, I, I mean, are we getting our, how much are, are these strategic partners paying to use our facility?
Yes.
Ticket sales, are we getting a percentage of that?
No, we do not get a percentage of ticket sales.
So are we, are we charging enough to make sure that? I, I don't see the numbers and that's what the first, I mean, I want to see like these strategic partners, how much they're paying, you know? Because we have to upkeep these buildings. The one thing we have to stop doing in South Fulton is allowing people to use our facilities and then having the maintenance be on the backs of our taxpayers. Because it's not happening in any other city. And a lot of, a lot of people are running to South Fulton to use our facilities because we haven't mastered in that area of making sure that we are being compensated, like we should, so that we can maintain our facilities. And so I don't see the numbers in this presentation, you know? What people are paying, how much we're expending. You know, you just said a chiller is out and we're not going to get, that's a lot of money. And I know that wasn't cheap to replace.
Correct.
So, and with those a lot, that's like almost what, over, almost fifty strategic partners? So I want to see the numbers.
Okay.
And I want to see also that as the cost, you have needs, area of needs. And you have HVAC, HVAC replacement, replace stage floor on main stage, portable sprung floor, water fountains, where's the, how much is all of this going to cost? I don't, I don't see any numbers. And, and, and I mean, we have two, our main roles here in the city council is policy and budgets. And so for us to make the decisions and give you all what you were requested for, we got to know how much stuff costs.
Got it.
Okay, Mr. Toms, so.
I'm sorry to cut you off.
Yes.
Some of these areas have already been budgeted for in our capital improvements. The stage floor replacement has always, already been budgeted for in the capital improvement. Uh, we're receiving quotes on that currently. And I think that's, the chiller, of course, was budgeted for in the capital improvements.
And so we just probably need, when you present, and if you could just make sure you have the cost, how it's being paid, um, you know, that would be helpful. The strategic partner lists, Kenny Leon, Allow, Alliance, State of Dominion Entertainment, how much of these, how much are we contracting? What are we getting? Because they, I know they're just not using our facility for free.
No, 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 no.
So.
Our rental fee sheet was pre-approved, I believe, couple of months ago. Two, yeah, a couple of months ago. So they're paying what the, um, what's presented on the rental fee sheet.
So in the, in the future, if you could just have like a revenue sheet of how much we're expending, how much we're, how much we're getting and how much we're expending, you know? That will help us make a better decision and probably see what the other areas are doing. I know that City of Atlanta have a lot of art centers. And, um, how are they operating? How are they raising funding? How are they maintaining? You know? I just want us to, not you, I'm just saying that, uh, overall, I want us to see, I want to see the city do better in that area. Because at the end of the day, these repairs and the maintenance of these buildings are on our backs. Mr. Toms, is cultural arts split from parks and rec at this point?
Cultural, cultural art does have its own budget and items in the capital budget.
Okay, and so under cultural arts, we have just Wolf Creek Amphitheater and Southwest Arts Center at this point?
No, that's not correct. Uh, Wolf Creek is a separate budget for cultural arts.
So you have Wolf Creek, because you have the, um, enterprise fund.
That, that is correct.
Yeah, and I did that legislation, so I remember that. And then you have the south, the cultural arts and that's just Southwest Arts Center?
At this time, it's just the Southwest Arts Center, because Clifton Dale has not been budgeted.
Okay. I just would like to see if you can, um, tie some numbers to this presentation. Because these are a lot of strategic partners. And we need, and I'm glad, you're doing a good job, but we need to get more information out so people can know what we're doing in the Arts Center. And then we need to make sure that we are fairly, we're getting what's due to the city so that we can maintain the facility.
Got it.
Thank you.
And we also, I'd just like to let you know that we did just get access to the city's website. So Cultural Affairs does have a tab on the website. Um, upcoming productions are currently posted. Rental information is currently posted. Programming is posted, as well as upcoming exhibitions is posted on the city's website. If you click on the Cultural Affairs tab.
Okay, um, um, I, I do see some folks in the queue, but I, I, I want to just chime in and, um, for a second and offer, uh, some context. And first, I want to start with an apology. Ms. Avini got word about this presentation on Friday, though we had placed it on the agenda, uh, a week before today. So it should be, it should be more replete with information, but I, the Bible and the parable of the talents teaches us that if we are faithful over a few things, right? That we, uh, will be given many things. And I think that what is happening and not- And I think that what is happening and not happening at the Southwest Arts Center, um, to your point, Councilwoman Willis, is very instructive as we, we, we haven't been faithful over this three hundred and seventy-five seat theater. And we're about to take, that we own, and we're about to take on a five thousand-seat amphitheater that we don't own. And I think that there are lots of lessons that we can learn about addressing maintenance, um, maintenance issues and, 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 uh, things like HVACs and chillers and all these things that we'll need, you know, all of these things that we'll need. We gotta report about, uh, about Wolf Creek. So I think that, that this is a great place to really practice, um, our stewardship. But I think that it's also instructive and I would like, I see, um, the True Colors Theaters, uh, Business Director, uh, Ms. Chandra Stevens Albright in the audience. I would like for her to come forward. I think that it's also instructive for us to have a conversation about the arts and how they are funded. Um, it is the case that most performing art venues, like the Alliance Theater, Theatrical Outlet, Seven Stages, are heavily subsidized. And, uh, they may not have been receiving the subsidies, subsidies that are, that are, that they deserve, that, that you deserve. So, um, we, we know that theaters, I don't know where that noise is coming from. We know that, um, theaters and arts and entertainment venues were particularly hard-hit in the pandemic. Uh, most recently, some of you may or may not know Lyric Theater in Marietta closed after forty-two years of operations. They closed in the middle of their season, uh, even though people had bought tickets. So, so a lot of our theaters are suffering. But I think that, uh, when we talk about these partners, so what's, the people that are our partners are supposed to get, in, in the models that I am familiar with coming out of theater, they are supposed to get subsidies and discounts for being the partners, right? Uh, there, there is money from the Fulton County Arts Commission that goes to Southwest Arts Center. Could you, Ms. Stevens Albright, just talk a little bit about the funding that we may or may not be, that you may or may not be receiving and the funding models of how, how theaters actually work?
Sure, good afternoon and thank you for having me. My, my title is Managing Director of True Colors Theater Company. Jamil Ju is the artistic director. So if you think of us, I'm the left brain, he's the right brain. So I'm the business department situation. So I really would be more comfortable answering questions for you, but I can tell you that we, last year, actually this year, we're projecting about a one-point-four million dollar budget. That's how much money we're gonna spend. And most of that money that comes into us is contributions. Only nineteen percent of the money that comes in to support us is from tickets. So everything else comes from foundations, governments, uh, corporate sponsorships and, and individuals, but only nineteen percent of that comes from tickets. Um, and for us, we get nineteen percent of our contributions is from people. Um, for other theaters our size, like Actors Express or Theatrical Outfit, they get forty, fifty, sixty percent of their income from people. So if you translate that, we, we are right now budgeting about a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars from people. If we were to get what they got at Actors Express, we'd be getting four hundred thousand dollars. So we're very, very, very reliant on foundations, governments, and companies. Um, what we pay each year at Southwest Arts Center is about a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. We pay for rehearsal space and we pay for, um, the, the actual venue space. And, uh, I think our, our MOU includes costs of maintenance and so forth, so we have to keep the theater in a certain condition, but the folks at SWAC actually do the maintenance work. We've recently moved to digital programs instead of paper programs. Not only does that cut down on cost and waste for us, it also cuts down on trash in the theater. Um, so that's sort of how our structure works. The main thing I want to take away is it's very generous, um, support that we get. We do, we do get the nonprofit rate for using the space. We use it about twenty-seven weeks a year. We do three, eight-week, um, plays. So we do a play for four weeks, we're then rehearsed for four weeks. So we're in the theater, my math is bad, we're in the theater for about twenty-four weeks a year and that's in contiguous blocks, three contiguous blocks. Does that, does that address some of those?
Some of the questions, I'll ask Ms. Avini to come back up. What, what are we getting from the Fulton County Arts Commission? Like how much a year does the Southwest Arts Center or True Colors receive? And what does that cover?
I'm not particular to what True Colors receives from Fulton County Arts and Culture, but we at Southwest Arts Center do not receive any funds from Fulton County Arts and Culture. That's through the, um, CFS, Contracts and Services. Southwest Arts Center does not receive funds from Fulton County.
All right, and what do you all receive?
We received last year thirty-six thousand dollars. In the past, we've received as high as forty-four thousand dollars over a year.
And, and what, and what does forty, is that a large amount? Is that a small amount? What does forty-four thousand cover?
Well, if you think about the fact that our, our budget is one-point-four million dollars, it's important, but I'd say that the biggest chunk of our budget in terms of contributions is gonna be, uh, corporate, which is like four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So it's like a tenth of our biggest piece. We don't think anything is too small and not begrudging any gift, but in context, that's about the world.
Right, and so I, I think that's important to note because the arts are, are a public good. It's, it's not necessarily a for-profit enterprise. And if we want to continue to support live theater, uh, we, we had this play, Good, Good Bad People, so it was a world premiere. We are, we had a, another world premiere during Christmas. If we wanna support our local artists and writers and dancers and actors, we are going to have to start putting in a little bit more, I think, um, as a city. I do just have one more question about promotions, um, Ms. Avini. The, what is the current model? Because I know many times, um, when I have tried to promote a show, there isn't a link on the city's website or the Southwest Arts Center page where people can go and buy tickets. So how are tickets and promotions being handled, show to show?
So because we do not have the staff to operate a box office, it is up to the presenter of each production to sell and manage their own tickets.
And, and, and does that mean, and they're, they're also then responsible for their own promotions?
Yes.
And is that?
We promote, um, the programming that happens at Southwest through our various channels, our social media, the constant contact, and now on the city's website. But we do not operate their box office. So on each flyer, there is a link for people to buy tickets, um, but they cannot buy tickets through Southwest Arts Center until day of show, when the presenter is there to operate the box office themselves.
And so is it, is it, would it be your recommendation, is it standard practice? Do we need to, um, be hiring staff to, um, run the box office to help promote the shows? Maybe take, uh, you know, Instagram reels of rehearsals or whatever to help prom, like what, what could we be doing more to fill the three hundred and seventy-five seat theater? Cause I've been to several shows and I don't think they're as well-attended as they should be.
Yes. Most venues that we work in will ask us to, we use our own box office cause it's easier, easier for us to manage our accounting and so forth. What's really helpful for us and which Southwest has been really great at is putting links in their newsletters. So we provide the links and those links get clicked and come back to us. Um, so what's really helpful is, is help, just getting out in front of people. So if you guys are having town halls or if you're having meetings, if there is events, we go to events and pass out flyers. We would love that. Um, this, this, today is a wonderful opportunity for us. But I couldn't speak more highly of this partner because they're putting our work out on their platforms.
Awesome. Is there, is there any things staffing-wise that we could be doing more of?
Not unless we are going to start operating our own box office at Southwest.
Okay, all right.
But that would not necessarily speak to marketing. Marketing is billboards, marketing is radio advertisements, marketing is television advertisements.
So, I mean, that's what I'm asking. Do we need to be doing that? Do you leave that to each individual production?
We leave it to each individual production.
Should we leave it to each individual production?
Yeah.
I believe we should. I don't think we want to get into that.
All right.
As a city-funded, uh, facility. Yes, I'm sorry.
Awesome. Okay, well, thank you so much. Mayor Pro Tim Williams Brown. Stay up there, there, we have more questions. Mayor Pro Tim Williams Brown.
Thank you. Um, how, this may be a question for the city manager, um, Don Toms. How many grants from, has the city applied for from the Georgia Council for the Arts and/or the NEA?
No.
Yeah, I'm not aware, I'm not aware of any, but I would have to check the list that, that Ms. Williams provided me.
Have, have you as the director applied for grants from the Georgia Council for the Arts or the NEA?
Not since I've been director, no, yeah.
Yes, yes, go, go, you, you can stay up here.
We didn't bother doing them. Um, they're very small grants and, um, typically when they come to us, they want us to work with municipalities. I don't know that they actually fund municipalities, um, but that's, I just wondered.
Well, well, actually, they do. The Georgia Council for the Arts has a grant for cultural facilities.
Oh.
Um, and so I would like to see and, and, um, to the extent that we have a grants manager who seemingly can't manage to write grants, I would like to see, um, more of these opportunities being pursued, um, for the city because even though the funding may be small for the arts, every dollar that we can get, um, through these grants such as the cultural facilities grants from Georgia Council for the Arts, is a dollar taxpayers don't have to spend to subsidize.
Right.
Um, to subsidize and underwrite the Southwest Arts Center. Um, the second thing also, probably for you, uh, city manager, is I'm hearing a little too frequently from different directors and department heads that we as the council should go on social media to look for information or that we will be added to a constant contact or whatever the communication is. I, I don't think that that is the best way for the council to receive information. I, I shouldn't have to go hunt things down on social media, they should come to me. Um, and so if we can get, as Councilmember Willis pointed out, we have got to get a better communication plan so that we're receiving information and not having to go play Where's Waldo to figure it out.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Pro Tim Williams Brown. Dr. L.
Uh, thank you. Um, this is probably a city manager question too. It's, it's been a, um, I frequently talked to Solandia as well as Ms. Anderson and some of the repairs at the Southwest Center have just been outstanding for a very extended period of time. Um, particularly those water fountains and the like. I mean, um, we really need to address that. I know as it relates to the chiller in, in particular, that got ordered last year. I mean, I know their supply chain and we're very happy it's finally arriving. But, um, I would also like, um, as a part of our, um, mid-year budget, to find out those items that are just basic things that should be occurring in the facility to come back to us in the form of a recommendation from you. Um, things that are not on the capital budget as it stands now. And, you know, excluding the things that we've already ordered that are not there. You know, that we know they're coming, but they're not on the list. I definitely wanna see that as well as they lost several positions, so they, they're not fully staffed at the Southwest Arts Center. So we need to make sure that's corrected. So those are my, my comments. And before we can take care of anybody else, we gotta make sure we take care of home.
Thank you, Dr. L. Uh, Councilwoman Willis.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Toms, if you can clear up this, cause there's a lot of misinformation around Wolf Creek and us not owning Wolf Creek and, you know, why are we putting money into Wolf Creek? Could you please, between you and Mr. McLennan, explain why the deed has not been turned over to the city of South Fulton?
Anything dealing with the deed in Fulton County, I'm gonna have to defer to the city attorney's office.
So it's my understanding, the only thing that we are waiting on is EPD certification. And until that certification is turned over, the county cannot sign over the deed. Am I correct or am I wrong? Or is there something else that I'm missing? Because there's a lot of misinformation being put out about the city in Wolf Creek. And I just really, and it's not true. And I just really wish somebody would clear it up and stop allowing the narrative, the false narrative to, to, you know, perpetuate.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Willis. I will have to refer you to the city attorney's report. I believe it does address that issue. Uh, I'm not specifically privy to that as Mr. Hyman handles that, those matters, but it is in the city attorney's report.
Okay, Mr. Toms, you don't have any information on?
No, between, in reference to the deed and EPD, that would be the city attorney.
So is that, to your, to your knowledge, is that the only thing that we're waiting on? Is that the only reason we don't have it? I mean, I guess we have had other facilities that we have had leased until certain things was cleared up. For example, Trama Crow, do we have, do we own Trama Crow now? So why is Wolf Creek being magnified? We, we have been in this position before. We don't own Trama Crow. We don't own a fire station. Do we own a Fire Station Eleven now? On Fulton Industrial? We don't own.
Point of information, Councilwoman Willis. I will just note your previous comments about your manatees, so we're, we're.
Right, so my point is that Wolf Creek is no different from other facilities that we don't own because of outstanding bonds or outstanding issues that have to be cleared up. And in Wolf Creek's case, it's EPD. The other thing.
I, I will, I will note, Councilmember Willis, that there are several items that have been placed on the agenda for repairs at Wolf Creek that this council has voted on and are currently underway.
Yes. Just like we had to rev, we had to do repairs at Trama Crow and we had to do remediation at Fire Station. I'm just saying Wolf Creek is no different from the other facilities that were turned over from the county that we had to do repairs for, that we don't, that's not in our name yet until certain things are cleared up. The other question that I do have is, can we consider, cause we are going back and forth about these grants and we're leaving a lot of money on the table. Um, Fulton County does have an arts grant and I know that they have already given the city of Fairbairn money. And we need to talk with our Fulton County Commissioner, who represents majority of South Fulton now. And we are the largest city that he represents in, um, South Fulton. And we have the main art center here in South Fulton. And so we need to have a conversation with him to find out how can we get grant money like Fairbairn did? Through them, because they do have art grants that we're not getting. And, Mr. Toms, we might need to look into contracting someone out to write grants on behalf of the city and pay them a contingency fee based on their production. Because we have, since I've been sitting in this seat, twenty-seventeen, trying to, tried to recruit someone to do that and we keep recruiting people who has the expertise to administer grants, but not write them. And there's a difference between a grant administrator and a grant writer. And we have not been able to secure a grant writer that wants to work here in the city full-time. Most grant writers wanna be consultant, consultants or they wanna be contracted out and that needs to be done ASAP. We have transportation grants, we have art grants, let's keep it germane. We have a lot of art grants that are being left on the table. Federal, state, and local money.
Can you ping me?
Thank you.
Can you defund me?
Yes, I will.
Thank you, Councilwoman Willis. Mayor, did you go in and come out? Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown?
Thank you. And these are comments that will sound very familiar to Councilwoman Sebastian, because I would like to remind council, city mayor, city manager, that last year, we had already put on the table and had had a meeting, a couple of meetings, about grants, Grants Department, Grants Writers, Grant Administrators. I specifically said, because this is sort of my wheelhouse, you cannot get a grant manager to write grants. You cannot get one grant writer to write across every department in the city because you have to have specific subject matter knowledge about what you're writing about, and it's not possible for one person to contain all of, to just hold all that knowledge. And that conversation and that meeting, keep me honest, Councilwoman Sebastian, was deep-sixed, went nowhere, even though we already agreed that that's what we wanted to do last year. And when we inquired as to where it went, we were told, keep me honest, Councilwoman Sebastian, oh, well, we thought that the grants manager, who's not a grants writer, was going to be sufficient. So we've already had this conversation, the decision has already been made. It needs to be executed, pick it back up off the table, and do what the council said we want it done last year. And stop stalling. Just get it done. And I'm going to look this way, because I don't want nobody to say that I'm bullying and harassing them if I look that way. We don't need to have this conversation again. Do what we said to do, when we said to do it, and we wouldn't be here, having this same conversation right now.
Councilwoman Sebastian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown, yes, I agree. This is something that I believe month two, for me being on council, I was at NLC. And I remember sending a text saying, hey, they are literally giving away money up here in Washington DC. How are we going to access all of these monies? And I came back and I said, we need to get a Grants Department going. And Councilmember Reeves and Mayor Pro Tem Williams worked with me, with staff in a couple of meetings. And I thought we were clear. And when I asked for the legislation to put it in place, I kind of was told it was already in place in the Finance Department, I believe, which is not what we really requested. Kind of sorry you're getting caught in the middle of this, but this is a real conversation that we need to have because every day that we wait, we are missing a lot of opportunities. So it's a little bit of a frustrating point personally for me to see the grants and then trying to figure out, you know, yes, we have one person who's a manager, and as Mayor Pro Tem said, that doesn't mean that person can write grants. But I have consistently said, in the middle of these meetings that we have, is figure out a way in which you can even contract with a company to write those grants on our behalf until we're able to build the capabilities out internally. I don't think that's different than any other thing that we do, Public Works, whatever not. But I know that we have had some changes at the top, but I would really encourage us, city manager Toms, I really encourage us to look back at this again, because it keeps coming up, right? And so the sooner we get to this, the better. It's my fact when we were in Washington DC, on our visit, I believe, is Senator Ossoff's office we were at, and we were saying to them that we were in the midst of setting up this Grants Department. And even that staff was commending us for sort of stepping out as a city of our size of doing that. You know, so again, I can only encourage us as a staff, as a team, to put our heads together and make this work, because we're leaving a lot of money, I mean, up and down across our city. There are needs for us to write grants, right, and get some, quote-unquote, some free money. Yes, we know it's painful sometimes to administer them, but believe in me, if Ms. Smoot and her team can go through this training for CDBG and get it, I think over time, we can build the same capabilities for our Grants Department, and in the meantime, get some outside help. So I implore us again, as a team, as a city, to refocus on this. Thank you.
I want to thank, just a couple more follow-up things. First of all, I want to thank the council for this, and then we have this other part. But I want to thank the council for this work session. Not going to be redundant, just ditto everything that my colleagues have said. I will note that I remember Councilwoman Gumsen, particularly Dr. R. We've been talking about grant writers since 2017, when the city started, and some departments have just gone ahead and put grant writers. I think the police have a grant writer, firefighters have a grant writer. So if you want to just put it in your budget for next year, I think that's important. I also would encourage, because since I came in 2017, we've been talking about the water fountains and the bathrooms, and I've heard about the curtains from, you know, actors and things. So let's get it all in the budget, grant or no grant, so that we can, you know, get it done. I want to say the lesson, again, this isn't about putting, pitting facilities against one another, but I think there are lessons that we can learn. The HVAC went out, and the chiller has been on order for a year. We know this is going to be a hot summer. You all may remember a couple of years ago when we had graduation out at Wolf Creek. We were baking, unlike some of the newer facilities, we don't have covering. So if we need to get cooling stations or misters, if we need to come up with a plan for our EMS to have people out there when we're doing shows, we need to be working on that now.
There is a backup AC there, isn't that correct?
There's a backup AC, it's not properly cooling the facility.
Yes. So, and I'm saying that not just, again, this isn't about, this isn't about just Southwest Art Center, but seeing how long it's taking to order things in the pandemic system-wide, whatever we're going to need to keep people safe at Wolf Creek this summer, I just want to make sure that we're ordering it now. And, you, we mentioned that there was no funding from the county, but the county does give money for classes, some of the senior classes are subsidized through a program, is that correct, from the county?
When we were with Fulton County, those classes were subsidized through a grant from Fulton County. Since we transitioned over to the city, those funds did not transition with us.
Okay. All right. And then lastly, while we have everyone here, I would like to end on a happy note. Shandra Stevens Albright, if you would tell them about the amazing production that we're going to have for Juneteenth of The Wiz.
Thank you, we're excited. We used to present this show from 2004 to 2007. It was a TYA, Theater for Young Audiences production. Some of the actors that got their start there were Chloe and Halle Bailey, you all know who they are, and also Joaquina Kolokanga, who won the?
Tony.
Tony, thank you. Last year. So we're bringing it back. Originally, it was going to be a concert reading, but we've got Michael, I'm sorry, we have the director Brian Jordan Jr., who is from Sisters, Tyler Perry's Sisters, is going to be the director. So we're very excited, we've got some wonderful young actors that are going to be a part of it, and that's going to be coming back to Southwest Art Center. It's going to open on June 13th and close on July 2nd, and hopefully we'll get an extension for a week. Tickets are going, are on sale now. If there's a best way I can talk to someone about telling you directly, I'll be happy to send that to each of you directly, and would love to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Jaclyn Howell, the blonde woman in the back, make sure that she knows that the website is True Colors Theater RE.org, and this is your 20th anniversary season. So congratulations on that. All right, I'll let you go on to the next item.
The second part of the presentation is the Wolf Creek Amphitheater Operations Plans. I'd like for you to keep in mind, this is a proposal, so it is open for suggestion. Are you ready with the first slide? Okey-dokey. You can go to the next slide, please. So, our objectives for Wolf Creek are to create a City of South Fulton branded positive patron experience. Provide high-level customer service, maximize event visibility, and Wolf Creek Amphitheater utilization, effective and efficient facility management, and fiscal accountability. Next slide, please. Just a couple of facility details, if you're not all familiar with these details. Is that better? It includes the covered stage, walkways and ramps that are ADA accessible. There's sight lighting and landscaping, including the sod and the asphalt painting and stripping. There's fencing out at Wolf Creek Amphitheater. Site utilities include electric power supply, water supply, sewer and storm management, dressing rooms, and support spaces behind the amphitheater, those would be the backstage areas, the VIP dressing room, there's a VIP kitchen backstage, the public restroom facilities, which include 42 ladies toilets and 20 men's toilets, the box office with two windows, two skyboxes, which has an eight to 10-person capacity. There are approximately 1,027 fixed seating units in the tiered seating area, possibility for 208 table seats, 1,041 VIP seats with 14 seats meeting ADA requirements, 3,881 general lawn seats with 40 seats meeting ADA requirements. And there are 923 parking spaces, which includes 23 ADA parking spaces. Next slide, please. So this slide is listing the renovation and repairs timeline. As you all know, because you approved it, renovations are currently happening at Wolf Creek. Osprey Management has been contracted for those renovations. The skyboxes, the public restrooms, the LED walls, all those things are happening. And if I miss something, please let me know. This next slide, thank you, city clerk. Are the immediate and short-term needs totaling $22,700?
Totaling how much?
$22,700.
What, short-term?
Short-term and immediate needs. There was an assessment done, and right now I can't remember the name of the assessment company, but this was the Atlas? These were the projected timelines and repairs done by that company. So year one would be parking, exterior painting of the buildings, and the carpet. Parking is currently being addressed. Exterior painting of the buildings, I'm not sure if that's being addressed yet or not. And the carpet, I don't think the carpet is being taken care of yet, but it is in the year-one timeline. Year two would be the HVAC in the offices, the fixed seating area, and replace the window units in the offices. Year three would be the HVAC work in the backstage area and dressing room areas. Year four would be the exterior work on the buildings, the water heater replacements for skyboxes, public restrooms, VIP hospitality area. And then year five would be another parking lot refresh and painting of the exterior surfaces. So from what I gather, the repairs of the pipes in the skyboxes are being addressed now, the toilets in the public restrooms, the parking lots are being resurfaced, the mold remediation is being addressed in the backstage offices, and cosmetic renovations of the skyboxes are taking place. Next slide, please. This is a continuation of the renovation and repairs timeline. This just shows year five, what I've just summed up. So if you have not been out to the campus of Wolf Creek, this gives you a color overview of what Wolf Creek campus looks like. Next slide, please. This slide shows a sample layout of what seating could look like for a concert or any event happening at Wolf Creek. As you can see, they have VIP tables down at the bottom, and then the fixed seating area, and then the lawn area, which is in the green in the back. There are also different-sized tables that can accommodate up to 10 guests for the tables that are closest to the stage, and then the tables in, well, you can't see them now, the tables in purple will accommodate eight guests. So this is a sample public safety personnel layout, where everyone should be stationed during an event. So, yes, the management approach. So City of South Fulton's staff should manage the daily facility operations of the Wolf Creek Amphitheater. It is our proposal that the Amphitheater Director will be the primary contact for facility operations and event logistics, and the Amphitheater Director should report to the city manager. Next slide, please. The proposed personnel needed would be a Facility Director, Facility Director, and Production Manager, a Marketing Manager, Financial Administrator, Box Office Manager, three Box Office Staff, and Seasonal Park Staff, which includes your House Manager and your Ushers. So the full-time positions would be your Facility Director, your Production Manager, your Marketing Manager, and your Financial Administrator. Your part-time and seasonal staff would include the Box Office Manager, the three Box Office Staff members, a House Manager, and Ushers. And you're looking at a minimum of 14 Ushers, depending on the event. Next slide, please. So personnel costs. The proposed Wolf Creek official season would be May to September, which would be Mother's Day weekend to Labor Day weekend. And any events booked outside of these dates would be considered private or off-season events that are not produced by the city. Proposed costs for full-time, part-time, and seasonal positions, the four full-time positions, which include benefit projections, would be $449,063 annually. The part-time projection would be $171,071. So the current RFPs that are out, there was a Concert Promotion Services contract that went out for the Summer Concert Series, and council has approved for the city manager to enter into negotiations with Omega 14 for that RFP. Administration. So City of South Fulton's Wolf Creek staff would provide a master calendar to selected vendors and service providers. That master calendar would identify events consisting of concerts, festivals, community events, and theatrical productions consistent with the city's overall objectives. The Marketing Manager would be responsible for the development and implementation of all marketing and promotion for each event in coordination with the promoter. The promoter will in turn work with the Facility Director and the Production Manager to coordinate all bookings and venue operations for identified event dates included on the master calendar. It is proposed that the venue enter into a 70/30 partnership with the promoter, with the city taking in 70% of the total profit of ticket sales, food, and beverage merchandising. I'm sorry, food and beverage and merchandising. Next slide, please. Food, beverage, and merchandising. The Facility Director will seek licensed food and beverage merchandising contractors to manage vending. The promoter would be responsible for managing. The promoter would be responsible for managing talent merchandise, sales, and coordination. A premier food service or premier food service vendors will offer a pre-fee menu option to the skybox patrons and table seating. Food service will be in addition to the rental fee for skyboxes and table seats and may be pre-purchased with tickets slash rental packages. Vendors will be charged a set amount for vending spaces. RFPs will be issued per season for vendors. Vendors would be responsible for their own permitting and alcohol licenses. Financial management. Wolf Creek was established with an enterprise fund. The financial administrator will present a fiscal year budget. And the financial administrator will implement a cashless system for revenue management for ticketing, merchandise, food, and beverage, and parking through mobile payment apps or credit, mobile payment apps or credit and debit cards. Financial projections can be made after year one of facility operations. Wolf Creek should seek qualified vendors to provide the following services. Concert and event promoter, parking management services, janitorial services, and technical services. The concert and event promoter would provide the following deliverables, proposed productions, talent acquisitions, event strategies, and include a variety of entertainment. Parking management services would create the parking plan with paid parking in ADA spaces and institute a cashless parking software. Janitorial services would create a master plan to include pre- and post-event maintenance and restore the facility to acceptable conditions within twenty-four hours. Establish green practices and recycling programs to meet industry standards. And daily, monthly, and yearly janitorial plans. The deliverables for the technical services would include sound and lighting equipment for each event, necessary staff and labor, and setup and breakdown for each event, which would be load-in and strike. Next slide, please. The events planned for the current twenty-twenty-three season, there's the Divine Nine Race in June, the Juneteenth Celebration. And July through September would be the summer concert series. I believe there's also a rental on the books for June second for the Wolf Creek Amphitheater. The proposed Juneteenth twenty-twenty-three event, the date is Sunday, June eighteenth, time, two to ten PM. Of course, the location is Wolf Creek Amphitheater. The proposed activities would be Kid Zone, art and craft vendors, local entertainment, DJ, fireworks. The proposed musical acts were Higher Calling, Algebra, We Got the Jazz, Young Bloods, Kilo, Goody Mob, with a comedic host and DJ.
Sorry, can I just, really quick, you said the proposed acts were?
Yes. So an RFP was supposed to go out through the procurement department for the promoter for Juneteenth. I don't believe that RFP was able to go out before we lost that procurement manager. So, to my knowledge, we're still waiting for that RFP to go out.
Okay.
Is, can I ask a question?
I mean, go ahead, I'm just, because you just said that, I didn't mean to interrupt, go ahead.
No, it's okay.
You can, is that the end of your presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
That is the end of the presentation. Corey, you could push that sound and see if it works.
Yeah, I made it a PDF, so, but I can, yeah.
So I would, I plan to leave you with some Happy Feelings by Frankie Beverly and Mase. The Corey Bane PDF.
I was conferring, I was conferring with our, with a member of my council. Mr. Tombs, I just want to, want to open up with this question. The RFP, we actually voted to not send that out. Was that, was that, there wasn't, wasn't there an RFP or something for Juneteenth which we voted not to do?
No.
Okay, that's not connected to these performers?
No.
No, it wasn't.
Just a RFP.
That's not what happened.
We asked for it to go through the official...
Procurement, process, okay.
Denied any promoter or whoever, we asked it to take it through the process.
Got you. All right, I'm going to go to the queue now, Mayor Protem Williams Brown.
Well, that, that actually does touch on the question that I was going to ask because we voted at the February meeting when we were given a sheet of eight and a half by eleven paper with no information and some numbers to put it through the RFP process so that things would be done decent and in order.
Correct.
Understanding that there's been personnel changes since that time. My question is, is there nobody else in this city? Because we do have a finance director, right? Is there nobody else in this city?
Or attorneys.
Or the attorneys, or somebody who could make sure, or is making sure, since we're in the present, that work is getting done? Because I believe it is April the eleventh, and we're about sixty days out from an event for which we apparently have no talent. And if we voted on this in February, why was this not the next thing up out the door when we voted for it? See, I'm gonna keep looking this way, so nobody can say I'm bullying and harassing them. So I'm gonna keep looking here. Because I'm not understanding how a person leaving means work stops. Because this is all on camera. Like roll that beautiful Bean footage. How did work stop on something presumably that was so all-fired important? We got presented an eight and a half by eleven sheet of paper with seventy thousand dollars on it, expecting us to approve it with no information and no details. Because I should not be finding out April eleventh in a work session who these acts are.
And we don't have them.
And right, and we don't have them, because work stopped. So I'm gonna go back to, is there nobody in this city capable of putting out an RFP when that's what we voted to do two months ago? Month and a half-ish. I'm not mean mugging you, Carmelita, I'm just keeping my eyes this way.
Question, Mayor Williams Brown. I'm Mayor Protem Williams Brown. So, we're gonna, we're gonna repose that in a more positive fashion. Do we have a date, ETA for the release of the RFP?
Don't, no, 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 no. Don't reword anything I said, I said what I said, and I meant it how I said it.
She doesn't get it.
Yes. As soon as we figure out what is going on with this audio.
I believe Councilmember Reeves was trying to speak, but he muted himself.
Okay, Councilman Reeves, you'll be next after Councilwoman Willis.
Okay, so to answer your question, Mayor Protem Williams Brown. This presentation was actually supposed to be presented to you all prior to the meeting where I presented you the eight and a half by eleven sheet of paper with the information requesting said artists. At that particular time, I was not able to divulge those artists because they were still being courted, so to speak. At the conclusion of that meeting, I had several meetings with the former procurement manager to try and get that RFP out the door. And before you, it was discussed in some of those meetings that we piggyback off of the RFP for the summer concert series and allow whoever was selected for the summer concert series to then acquire artists for the Juneteenth. However...
Can I stop you right there?
Certainly.
Because I don't think I understand how in a meeting, a decision can be made when the council voted for a specific action to happen, so...
Absolutely.
How do we get there?
Okay, so let me continue. So I went back to the former procurement officer and said, "Well, the council is asking that we send out an RFP for Juneteenth specifically." And it was just never done. It was never done, even though there were several follow-ups.
There's a lot of cross-talking and side-talking, and Lord knows, I do not enjoy executive sessions, and I don't think we should do a lot around HR and executive session. But I would like for this work session to be just solution-focused. If we want to spend some time in executive session figuring out who dropped the ball, when, where, why, and how, we could do that at another point, but the hour is late. Can we, do, let's just talk about the plan going forward, because it is, it is two months out.
Yes, absolutely. So I'm working with the now procurement officer to structure an RFP that is scheduled to go out this week.
All right. And is there any, will we need to do any review, or can it just go out without? I'm asking Attorney McLendon.
No, I don't believe so. I mean, excuse, not from my end.
Would there have to be any review of the RFP?
Yeah.
By mayor and council?
By anyone?
Not outside of the procurement department.
Okay, thank you.
So that's where...
So next week. All right. Counsel, were those all your questions, Mayor Protem Williams Brown? Thank you. Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you. I think we should be solution-focused, but we still have a right to ask questions for why, what we voted on, and what we sit in these meetings for, for eight and ten hours and discuss and vote on, why it wasn't executed. And so, um... Do we not have anybody that can do procurement?
Can I answer that?
I mean, I will, I'm asking the city manager, I just want to keep.
There are two employees working in procurement.
Are they qualified to put out RFPs? I mean, can they put out RFPs? And, because we're basically in May. And Juneteenth is, I mean, if we put out a RFP, I mean, I don't think it's a bad idea at this point if it's the will of the council, the will of the city council, to piggyback off of the vendor that was selected for the summer concerts. Because if we try to put out, if we can legally do that, I mean, we're talking about seventy thousand dollars. We're talking about seventy thousand dollars, so, you know, can we legally do that, Attorney McLendon?
I'll defer to answer that question in an executive session.
Okay, thank you. If we can legally do it, and we have to talk about this in executive session per the attorney advisement, at this point, we may not have a choice if we want to have anything for Juneteenth, or forego Juneteenth. I mean, because if we try to put out a RFP at this point, this is basically May. Thirty days of advertising it, then you got to go through the evaluation period. Then you got to go through the recommendation of, after the evaluation period is over. Then it has to come back to the council for approval, we're past Juneteenth. And then who's to say it's going to go out? Because we voted for it to go out in February, and it didn't go out. So, and I'm not being disrespectful, I'm just saying that people just don't do what we ask them, what the council asks them to do. Because that's what happened. So, I mean, I guess we'll just take this discussion off to executive session, okay?
Thank you.
Question, yes?
Well, it was told to me that the RFP that goes out can be done on a reduced schedule, so it does not have to be out for thirty days. We can reduce it to two weeks.
Yeah, but that still doesn't give us a lot of time.
It doesn't, but...
Because I mean, the RFP will have to go out like tomorrow, and it doesn't seem like the RFP is ready. The other question I have is, going back to Wolf Creek, we really do need to consider getting a covering. Did you all price that? I didn't see it, did you all price that?
That has not been priced yet.
So can we please get a price, because... Yeah, a covering for the Wolf Creek, sort of like how Mabel has theirs. We really do need to get that.
Yeah, that was discussed, but it wasn't included in this plan.
Can we, can we get...
The price for that, yes.
And then the other thing I want is, I don't understand why those skyboxes are considered VIP seating and they're all the way in the back of the stadium. Is there, has there any, and I know this is probably a futuristic request, has there been any requests to maybe build more skyboxes that's closer to the stage?
Not to my knowledge, no. I think they were put back there originally because that was the easiest access for VIPs to be out of the general seating area and be in an enclosed space, where they can enjoy refreshments, drinks, dinner, have their own private parties back there. So instead of having them backstage or close to the stage, they didn't build any seating area for VIPs closer to the stage.
See, I've seen it where the covering is over at the tables, close to the stage, and then those are like the VIP area seats.
Well, those are also VIP area seats, but if extra VIPs or other VIPs don't want to sit at table seating, and they do want to pay that premium for the skyboxes, then they would be available.
Okay.
But yes, the tables down front are VIP seating, and they would have VIP prices.
Okay, I yield.
This is, because half of the questions I got need to be in the executive session.
Any, anyone else, Councilwoman Gumps?
So I guess my question is, when are we going to get an operations and facility, was it financial administrator? So I guess my question is, when are we going to get an operations and facility, was it financial administrator for Wolf Creek Amphitheater? I think it's already budgeted, so has a, I guess, an ad or anything been sent out in regards to operations director?
Those positions, as she mentioned, were not budgeted.
For the operations for Wolf Creek? So we would go into this season without an operations director, right? Because it's not budgeted for this season.
For this, for this year, was that RFP for someone else to do all that concert promotion and work?
But the concert, so I thought they were two different. So the concert promotion and event person is only specific to getting the acts and the activity. The operations
Correct.
Director is to be responsible for the facility, and you're telling me that's not budgeted for this year? So we would be going into the concert series without an operations director?
We need, we need to talk about this in an executive session.
Is that what's happening? I'm so confused, is that what, is that what's going on?
To my knowledge, there was supposed to be an RFP for an operations manager? I'm not sure if that went out.
Okay, so let's talk in the executive session.
Okay. I do, I do have a few simple follow-up questions. The ushers that you mentioned, are they, are they volunteers?
Ushers for amphitheaters are not normally volunteers.
Okay.
Ushers for amphitheaters are usually paid positions.
All right, just, just, this is a suggestion. We have, and I don't know how it can be worked out, because we got to work out these staff issues, but I will say that we have some incredible local restaurants and even a couple of wineries. If there's any way that we could feature our own folks, you know, in the concession, so that people come back to, you know, eat at all of our places around the amphitheater, that would be great. Just for the edification of the public, what is the rental fee of Wolf Creek? And what, what comes with that?
I'm not sure if a current rental fee schedule has been proposed for Wolf Creek.
Right.
It has.
It has.
And approved?
Yes, I think it's $10,000? But what, what comes, what do you get with that? Do you just get the raw space?
You get the bare bones of the facility, you just get the space.
And you bring everything else?
Yeah, everything else has to be shipped in.
And so, I mean, we could talk about it, but I know that, you know, this might not, it might not be ideal, it might be something that we do, but I, there are, we have partners, taking it back to Southwest, right, because there are things that we can learn there. We have partners like Dominion and True Colors, but then there are other people that just rent out the theater. So like, a lot of the shows that we have going on at Southwest, people are just renting them out, and they're, and they're doing them. And that might be a kind of model that we have to consider until we get all these things online. And then, and then lastly, has any discussion been given, been given to leasing the naming rights to the skyboxes or to the theater itself? Because that could be a revenue generating sort of thing.
I believe that was proposed a while ago, but it hasn't been discussed recently.
Okay.
But it's always on the table.
Yeah, I would, I would just put that on the, on the to-do list. We have great corporate sponsors around here, and you know, we should sell as much stuff as we can. All right, we do have one I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I did promise, Councilman Reeves, go ahead, sir.
Well, I just wanted to say congratulations to you and to the cultural arts community and to the staff, as that I look forward to the robust program that you have. Of course, you have to work through the little nuances, but there's no doubt about it that it will be on the right track because it is in good hands, and so I just look forward to the future.
Thank you, Councilman Reeves.
Thank you, that's all.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the final item.
Last item is item seven on the printed agenda, C Click Fix Report, presented by Neymar Strickland, Director of Information Technology.
Evening, Council, City Manager. This is just a C Click Fix update. Okay, the purpose of C Click Fix and kind of the current use is to provide a method for reporting issues and to identify repairs for the constituents throughout the city. Some of the challenges that we've, we've had with C Click Fix is city turnover, because when people leave, those tickets are assigned to those individuals, so we've made some modifications on how those things are assigned. Operational efficiency and lack of customer service standards. So when people leave, I know the city manager spoke about a succession planning, so that's a part of the, some of the issues that we've had with that. Some of the solutions that we've looked at is developing a foundation for excellent customer service and supported, supported by operational efficiency and technology. Next slide. So these council concerns, I think they were primarily related to waste, solid waste, but I just wanted to kind of bring some of those forth, because it kind of overlaps a little. You have the solid waste, the call center is actually, the vendor is responsible for the call center for solid waste. So as it relates to C Click Fix, we don't have a call center directly. One of the other major items is the, are we going to continue to use C Click Fix? We are looking at all technologies related to it, and C Click Fix is just one of the two for customer service. So we're looking at doing a customer service needs assessment across the city, which will be a part of that. The current number of active tickets, you'll see the numbers through from, some of them go all the way back to 2019. 2023 active tickets, we have about 429. 2022, we have about 16, 100, $1,614, 21, $1,451, and 72 between 2019 and 2020, and those are active tickets. The next slide is a breakdown by department. And these are, so the first column is active tickets that are currently open. If you notice on the community development is the big vast of the tickets that are out there. And we're looking at, I think the current number is actually 670, when we first pulled it, that's the overall number. Some of that is based on disarray assignments, like I said before, but some of the modifications that we're making is to provide a group for answering those tickets versus individuals. Next slide. So the next steps going forward is, one of the things I talked about is where we're going to have a groups within departments to respond to the tickets versus individuals. We're looking at rebranding the 311 services across the board, not just for C Click Fix. We are also updating current technologies related to customer service, which is the phone, services approved earlier in the year, as well as the virtual agent. And we are continuing to do website enhancements. Next slide. And I'll be open to any questions if they're
I don't have access to the queue, Clark Adams. Okay, I'm not in it. Councilmember Willis, are you in the queue? I see Willis, Pritchett, and then Sebastian, and then Row.
That's an old queue, but
That's an old queue, okay. Councilmember Pritchett, are you in the queue? Okay.
Thank you for your presentation. My question with C Click Fix, one of the things that I have found is it has like so many categories, so many things to click. Is there a way to simplify? Because the majority of the people that I speak with either have a concern with litter, trash, illegal dumping, maybe a pothole, simple things. That thing goes over like every description of every possible function that we have, and I think if it was a lot simpler, a lot more people would feel more comfortable utilizing it. So is that something that we could look at?
Yes, we're already looking at that, so we've met several departments, like HR, finance, a lot of those people, there's really no need, with the exception of maybe a couple of one or two items, that they need to be in there. So we've, we're with the major departments, which is code enforcement, public works, and it's another one, to kind of reduce that, a CDRA as well, to reduce those categories, to make it more streamlined and grouped them together. So we are working through that now.
Now, does C Click Fix have a dashboard, say per se, for the end users like yourself and the departments that have to tie in? Is there a way that that dashboard can be extended to us? I don't know if y'all want to take that on, but at least have the ability per district when things are being reported, that people come to us with, at least on a dashboard of some type, we can look and see all the different things that are being reported in our prospective districts?
I'll see if we can do a reports, just add the reports to the reports that we provide you already. Just add C Click Fix report by district, and see if we can do that. I'm not sure, I think we can, we could possibly do it by district, but I'd check to see if we can do a report by district, or is it just citywide? But I'll let you know within the next update.
And then with regard to something that you said where a particular task or function is assigned to a person, and then that person leaves and the thing just hangs out there in the air. But we, we should have like a, like level of hierarchy, like where, you know, if somebody was assigned a task, their supervisor still is responsible for the completion of that task, regardless if that person leaves. So is there a way for, you know, multiple levels of assignment slash accountability? Because we just can't, like, just assign it to one person. It just has to get done.
Yeah, so that's what we've done, is we're working to do, like, most departments, they have group emails that everybody in the department or that division of the department has access to. So we moved to the model to where that division gets the emails, and that group is responsible for responding back. And then the actual director, all those would escalate up to the director. So those, we've made those changes recently. With some of the newer departments and some of the older departments, we made that change already.
Thank you so much. Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you for your presentation, sir. Question I have is about going back to the old definition of closed. Because I noticed there are two columns here in the report, active tickets versus closed. And we have all heard it, that what people complain about is getting these emails when it says closed, but the issue in the field has not really been taken care of. Have we addressed that, and does this report reflect actual closed projects? Or what we categorize as closed, even though the issues may not be resolved?
Well, as it relates to the resolution of the issue, I'm not sure. I'm just pulling the report and the data from. During the meetings with the departments, a lot of the issues that I've seen, and I'm just really looking at the data, is kind of what we just talked about. People have been assigned items, and there's been a lot of change over within the departments. And the layers of change in departments, there's some of those updates for those individuals. So I think, like, even the big number that we talked about in one of the departments, we're going to kind of go through all of those and look at them and try to contact each one of those. But a lot of the effort with that, people are saying those were, those were already completed and closed. One of the things that I'm seeing also is, a lot of the tickets that are coming through is from other solutions. So maybe they went through a primary solution, and they were not getting the response that they wanted, so they went to C Click Fix or even open records. And that's where some of the, some of the things that we're getting, that we're seeing, with some of these age tickets, they've been resolved, but it was through the primary solution.
So if there's, because what I'm understanding from that answer is, if someone sends something into Public Works, but it's a CDRA issue, Public Works may court it as closed, right, from their end, but it's not that the issue has been resolved, it's just it's been closed out of Public Works. That's how I thought it was working.
Well, right now, I don't think that's exactly the issue. Public Works, if they get it, it's not theirs, we try, and not just Public Works, it's all the departments. If it's not theirs, they send it back to an administrator. And then we try to get it to the right person. But what I was talking about, like permits, permits have the primary solution that they use for all permits.
What?
But when they're not getting answers from permitting, and this is just historical, they went to C Click Fix to open it to try to get the answer. When they don't get the answer there, they go yet to open records to try to get the answer. I think this was some of the actual time they're trying to fill. They went from one task to three to try to solve one issue. And that's, that's just a lot of things from a data standpoint, honestly.
I, I guess what I'm still searching for is this place where an item is not really resolved in the field, and us trying to tell the citizens it's closed. Because that's what people get upset about, and then they email us and call us. So how can they say it's closed? It's not been touched, right? So how can we avoid telling people something is closed when it's not? Regardless of who is going to resolve it? Because to the citizen, closed means it's handled in the field. So is, is there a pending state? Do we have the capabilities of adding a pending state? And when it's really resolved in the field, regardless of who, whose responsibility is, then the citizen would get that email and say, that says it's handled, it's closed now?
Yeah, there's actually four different stages. It's open, acknowledged, there's one in between, closed, I think it's pending maybe or resource. But as you go through the process, you select those items to acknowledge it that you have it, and then the pending or work in progress, and then it's a closed state.
So is this then a trending issue with how our staff use the system? Because
And that was one of the recommendations was to do a customer service assessment, because it's not just C Click Fix. There's a lot of other things for how we communicate, how we answer the phone and things like that. So my recommendation is something that I've talked to the city manager about, is to do a customer service assessment across the entire city, with internal staff as well as constituents, to see what issue that they're seeing, as well as what challenges that they have internally. They come up with a recommendation that we can quickly
Yes, that, and thank you for that, because, again, this issue of customer service, I had one of my board appointees sent me five telephone numbers that they called on Thursday last week, right? And they got no answer from any of those numbers, they didn't get an answer, a single answer. And to me, even if people are out of the office, from a customer service perspective, there should be a backup. If the city is open and operating, there should be a backup call forwarding something, right? Or even a voicemail to say, "We're out today, but call this number to help," right? Because when you're calling five numbers and getting zero answers, that's what the person, the people do, they didn't come to us, right? And we have to try and figure, well, why is this not working? So thank you for kind of focusing, especially through the C Click Fix, on the customer service.
And one thing related to the numbers, what we're also looking at, well, we've already kind of implemented in a couple of departments, is just have a main number for the department, and maybe even two for large departments with different divisions. And it's a main number that everybody in the office has access to, so when rings, somebody needs to pick it up. And then redirect it to the person that they're trying to get to versus having a number for an individual, because our retention rate is so poor, that by the time you have a number, you're working with somebody, they may not be tomorrow. So we're really trying to look at things like that to minimize those issues that we're seeing, to make it a lot easier for people to contact the office, because it's really about the service that they're trying to get, not necessarily the individual that they're trying to
That's correct. All right, sir, thank you.
Councilwoman Rao?
Uh, Councilwoman Raul.
Take me out, I'll take you, I'm good.
Okay. Is that, are we, is, okay. Thank, uh, thank you, Mr. Strickland.
Thank you.
That, I believe that brings us to council comments.
Yes.
Councilmember Raul.
Couple of quick updates. In lieu of the Easter egg hunt that had to be canceled due to rain, Parks and Rec is having a spring fun day on April fifteenth, this Saturday, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Sandtown Park. On that same day, from 10:00 to 1:00, in partnership with Commissioner Rockmond, we're doing a beautification project at Cascade Library and with the Evelyn Lowry Library in the Cascade Pocket Park. We'll be planting flowers for Earth Day. On April nineteenth, we'll have a District One Coffee with the Cop at the QLS Villa from 10:30 to 11:30. And on April twenty-second, we have the Cascade BMA cleanup at 10:00 a.m. And finally, as a part of Earth Day activities at the Hamilton Creek Nature Preserve from 10:00 to 1:00, there'll be all kinds of activities, flower planting, nature hikes, apiary experiences, all occurring on Earth Day. So happy Earth Day, everyone.
Councilmember Gomes.
Alrighty, well, can you all hear me? I think so. So this actually marks the week of Black maternal health for the United States. And we are one of the first cities out of 538 in Georgia to recognize this week for Black maternal health. In collaboration with This Week, because it's very important for women, especially to understand health disparities, especially when trying to bring life into this world, we have Dr. Angela Marshall, who will actually be hosting a webinar, speaking with individuals throughout our community to talk about Black maternal health and the things that we can look for as women and just how we can really advocate through this, this time. There is some federal legislation that is moving through the House and we want to continue to find ways to find, to support it locally. Also too, and that webinar will be on April the thirteenth at six o'clock. You can find out more information on the city's website as well as my own or on my social media channels as well. On, on 4/15, we will be doing a Wolf, the Wolf Creek Trail Cleanup along with a paper strutting day at Wolf Creek Library. That is at, what time? That is at 10:00 a.m. So we are doing that in partnership with Commissioner Marvin Arrington in Fulton County. And then, of course, you know, April is not just Autism Month, but is also Earth Day. Mr. Councilman Sebastian will tell you more about his autism activity that I do encourage everyone to go to. But on April the twenty-second, of course, we just approved for a environmental parade and fair where we will have lots of vendors from the community coming out in conjunction with our city. I hope to see some of our elected officials in the parade as an environmental ambassador because we do want to continue to support our, our community and our local little star, Kendall Rae. So that will be on April the twenty-second and that will begin about noon where they will be lining up off of Old National Highway. And that is all that I have at this time because I know we need to go. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Willis.
Um, I want to thank Cliffendale United Methodist Church, and we all value excellence for partnering with me last weekend. We had a great Easter, indoor Easter egg hunt, Easter baskets and food distribution where we fed over 250 families. I also want to remind everyone to come out to the Stop the Violence Rally in partnership with the Parks and Recreation and the Links for Change. Here, Welcome All Park on Sunday, the twenty-third. That will be the thirteenth year celebration of the Stop the Violence Rally. And then on Saturday, April twenty-ninth, we are going to have the grand opening of the District Three, City of South Fulton precinct. It's been a long time coming and it's finally here. So I am proud to host that alone. We will have coffee and cupcakes with a cop after we do the grand opening. And then on the twenty-second, Red Oak Main Street Program is having a cleanup day on Earth Day. And it starts at nine a.m. And that is on Delano Road, the Red Oak Cleanup Day on, at nine a.m. on Delano Road. And that is on April twenty-second. It starts at nine a.m. All right, thank you. Oh, if you're not getting my newsletters, it's very important that you get my newsletters. My email is helen.willis@cityofsouthfulton.gav. Or you can text District Three. Um, is it District Three? District Three. And at four two eight two eight, four two eight two eight. And then you can subscribe to my newsletter there. Thank you so much.
Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Just wanted to highlight a couple of things happening in District Four for the rest of April. In partnership with Autism Branches and Ms. Tanya Newberry, we're hosting on this Saturday, the fifteenth, the Second Annual Autism Sensory Festival at Wilkes-Barre Park. And that starts from ten in the morning until 5:30 p.m. So come out, drop by, it's a long day, but we are going to make sure that we really love on our, on our citizens, our special citizens on that day who we need to. You're distracting me. Uh, on the eighteenth of April, we have a, a meeting to discuss the Cedar Grove Village Center at seven p.m. That project at seven p.m. at Fire Station Six, sixty-seven twenty Cedar Grove Road. And also coming up on Earth Day, the twenty-second of April, Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, we're going to be doing a cleanup of Cedar Grove Park as well. And finally, this month, in the month of April, we're going to be hosting our Fire and Ice Cream Education, Fire Education Program at the Plaza at Cedar Grove Village Shops, right? If you guys recall, last year, thirteen-year-old who attended our first event last year ended up on Father's Day saving his family and their property from burning to the ground. So we're repeating this program again to educate our citizens on fire safety issues. And we'll be hosting that in conjunction with Fire Chief Chad Jones. And that's it for us for April.
Thank you. District Five, Councilman Reeves.
Mr. Chairman, recognizing me, but to all of the constituents and to anybody that wants to join us, just join us for our weekly call Monday, six thirty to seven thirty. You can find out more information at districtfive.mewe.org. That's districtfive.mewe.org. And I love y'all.
And there's nothing we can do about it.
I have some.
District Six, Mayor Pro Tem Williams Brown.
Yes, thank you. In keeping with the theme of fire safety, District Six will have a fire safety town hall on April nineteenth. As, as we are approaching grilling season, this is a wonderful opportunity to not only enhance your fire safety skills, but also learn how to keep those grills safe and your deck from catching fire. So please do come out, April nineteenth, Birdette Jim at six thirty p.m. Chief Chad Jones is making the rounds this month. But please do come out and join us in District Six so that we can also talk all things fire.
Thank you. District Seven, Councilwoman Pritchett.
I want to thank everyone that came out on Saturday to the food truck madness. We had a wonderful time, we had a wonderful crowd. A lot of our departments came out. I'd like to thank the police, fire, Public Works, Parks and Recreation, who had, was the brainchild for this idea. And I also want to thank Otis Nixon from the Atlanta Braves, who gave out baseballs, autographed baseballs. And I'd like to thank Councilwoman Williams, who got a baseball and came and hang out, hung out with us. And we had good fun fellowship and food. And we'll be doing more of that in the future. I have a Coffee with the Cop scheduled this Saturday at second, at Axe Two Church on Fayetteville Road. And we will be talking to the police in a casual setting. So that way, any questions that you have, especially about setting up your community crime watch programs and the different activities that are going on in District Seven, that you can be aware of what's going on and know how to see something, say something and do it the right way. Also, on Monday, April seventeenth, we will have an HOA boot camp for District Seven, although anyone in the city can participate. And that will be at the old National District Office, the new Economic Development Office. And we will have Attorney Marvin Arrington from the HOA Alliance that will be talking about knowing your covenants, knowing about your HOAs and POAs, and also knowing how to assemble an effective board, HOA board. Earlier in the legislative session, Councilwoman Raul and I attended South Fulton Day at the Capitol. We were invited there by our Senate, by our Senator Donzella James. And I'm very excited to announce that she has awarded me Elected Official of the Year for Senate District Thirty-five, which I was completely shocked, surprised, but I'm very excited about it. And when we were there, we met students from Westlake and they were part of the Arrow Youth Leadership Council International. And I was extremely impressed by the fact that they had a constitution and they shared with us a peace pledge. And I would like to read it because I think that it's something we all, especially us adults, can learn from the children. The pledge reads as follows. "I pledge to live in peace. I am a peacemaker. In spite of the reality of the negativity that may be before me, I choose to make decisions that lead to peace and to be the change that I want to see. I pledge to be considerate of others and express my views with civility. I pledge to be mindful that I must work towards a better state of social wellness. Therefore, I pledge to target my potential and not my classmates or friends. I have discovered that I have the velocity and momentum to create a better world for us all. I am creative, I am compassionate, and I am calm. I choose peace and I choose to embrace their pledge." Thank you.
Amen. All right. Just want to give you another reminder for those of y'all still watching, if you can hear. We, if you're behind on your mortgage payments due to the pandemic, we still have a rental and mortgage assistance program through cityofsouthfulton.gav. There is also a program through the Department of Community Affairs. You can double up on those programs. As you heard today, the True Colors Theater is celebrating their twentieth anniversary season. And fourteen of those twenty years have been housed at our wonderful Southwest Arts Center. You can, you've heard that we have an amazing show going up in June for Juneteenth, The Wiz. I can't think of a more appropriate celebration of joy. And there's another, there's another one, that Sirius He-Man Ball, which will be coming up in August. You can get those tickets at True Colors Theater, theater spelled R-E, not the way that we often spell it, theater.org. And there is a buy one, get one half off with the code NEWTRUE. Councilwoman Willis may have covered it, but we do have a Miracle League game here this weekend. We have two more in the spring season. We have a fall season coming up. Shout out to Karen Nunnally, President of the Miracle League, and Mr. Tinar Turner. We have very exciting plans to expand the, our Miracle League facilities and offerings for our specially abled young people. And then lastly, this weekend, last weekend, when we went from winter, from summer to winter in forty-eight hours, a lot of events got canceled or postponed, rescheduled throughout the city. You've heard our, our rescheduling of our spring festival. You can find out more about all the incredible events that we're having this weekend by texting the word Fulton to three three seven seven seven. But I do just want to give a shout out to some of the community organizations that soldiered on through the rain to provide a little sunshine for our young people. Especially Cornerstone Fellowship Church, Jump Forward Inc. and Rose Garden Community Centers. They had some incredible Easter giveaways with toys, food, all sorts of games and activities for the kids. You can see a very badly face painted mayor at CaliCaresUSA on Instagram or TikTok. But I do want to thank all of our wonderful community organizations that, that do work on behalf of our seniors and our young people. And with that, you can always make an appointment to see me at Mayor Mondays. We are open every Monday that I'm in town to get twenty minutes with the mayor. And we will, we will listen if nothing else. But we also actually try to solve the, the problems that we hear. So thank you all so much. Thank you for attending this meeting, South Fulton forever. And with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session or go home.
I make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Four.
Oh, I'm sorry, personnel, real estate and legal litigation.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, seeing and hearing none, we'll just take a vote by a show of hands.
Record that as unanimous, including Councilmember Reeves.
All right, thank you, everyone.
We recess at eight forty-eight p.m.
Coram of folks, thank you for staying up with us late nights here at South Fulton City Council. I will entertain a motion to reconvene.
I move that we reconvene.
Second.
It's properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, I will take a vote by a show of hands. All right, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded in unison. Let's do that by a show of hands. And I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Before we, I'm going to pause, I'm going to retract that vote. Mr. City Attorney, were there any items in discussing executive session for which we need to take a vote? need to take a vote publicly out here?
There were no items.
All right. Thank you. Seeing, any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none? All right, we'll do that show of hands now.
Good night, God bless.
All right, thank you, everyone. Safe. Be safe on your way home. We adjourn at 11:20 p.m.